Good evening, ladies and gentlemen on Zoom. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting on December 4th, 2024. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been proudly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start up to 10:30 PM. May I ask everybody to rise for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, the next Planning Board special meeting will be held December 11th, 2024 at 6:30 PM in person at Town Hall. The next Planning Board regular meeting will be held January 8th, 2025 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Roll call, please, Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert?
Here.
Mr. Cardoza?
Present.
Ms. Caffrey?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Morgan? Mrs. Muraldo? Mr. Woks?
Here.
Council President Rutherford?
Here.
Mayor McCartney? Mr. Guerino?
Here.
Chairman Bagoff?
Here. Thank you. So we're going to go out of order. We're going to do 10, 9, 2024, the Western Planning Board Draft Minutes. Adoption of those minutes. Do I have a, do I have a motion to adopt?
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chairman Garino's motion, I second the motion to adopt. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none on the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Mr. Klein?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Woks?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Council President Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Guerino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes, the minutes are adopted. Thank you. PB 24-07 Essex County Country Club Rescission Resolution. The voluntary rescission application of the resolution memorialized for the amended site plan approval to modify the existing golf course facilities. So there's a, to the board, there's a, an administrative motion that we have been asked to unwind our resolution for the Essex County Country Club. Block 156, Lot 1, Zone R2, decided on April 17, 2024, and memorialized in May 1st, 2024.
Dr. Bagoff, I see in the participants that Ms. Bennett has raised her hand. I believe that she wants to be promoted to a panelist, but not for this part of this. Because she's represented by council, so I don't know that she can actually speak to this resolution. But in any event, this is a resolution to withdraw as if it was never filed. The application that the board heard for the, I don't remember what it was most recently called. It was called at one point a halfway house and then a comfort station. But the applicant has requested that it be withdrawn, rescinded, as if it was never filed to begin with, without prejudice. And that, that will result in the dismissal, as I understand it. The plaintiffs on the, there was a prerogative writ filed with respect to the matter. Would that, that litigation will then be dismissed without prejudice.
Being that this is an administrative function requested by the applicant, there is no discussion on it. The applicant has the right under the law to do this. So I make a motion that we approve the voluntary rescission of the application and resolution memorialized for amended site, final site plan approval, modifying existing golf course facilities. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, I do have a question before we go forward. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask it or not.
Council President, we need to have a second so we can have a discussion. Council President, we need to have a second that we can have a discussion on the motion.
Second.
Mr. Cardoza's seconds. On the motion, we can now discuss it. Council President Rutherford.
As communicated earlier today, I wanted to understand the reasoning behind the request of the applicant. Was there any, was there any communication regarding the wetlands by any regulatory body indicating that this approval was somehow improper?
I do not believe that as such, but I know that Ms. John Basta, yep, there she is. She can, she can give you that, that information directly.
Okay, the chair recognizes Ms. John Basta.
Hi, good evening, board members. Lisa John Basta with the law firm Keysa Shahini and Jantumasi. I'm the attorney for the applicant and have been involved in the litigation. No, there has not been any communications with DEP. The request to rescind the approval is simply to resolve the lawsuit. The country club doesn't, does not want to go through the time and expense to litigate this matter. So to appease the objectors, we are looking to voluntarily rescind the approval.
Thank you, Ms. John Basta. I just wanted to be clear because that has been communicated to us. So I want to thank you for your clarification. That this is, this is, that is the sole reason. There are no additional reasons other than the desire of the country club to, you know, forego any future litigation. Is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That was my, my sole question.
Thank you, Council President. Do any of the members of the board have any questions about the reasoning? Seeing none, I'm calling the motion, Yamalat, on the motion. Yamalat?
All right.
That's okay.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Woks?
Yes.
Council President Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Guerino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. This is as it was. It was, it never happened.
Mr.?
Ms. Basta.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have, or Ms. McGovern.
Council President, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. If, is it, if there were to have been some determination by a regulatory body, that would have had to have been provided to the Planning Board with regard to this project, even though it had already been approved. Is that right?
No, that's not right. Unless, unless it was in direct violation of one of our ordinances or state regulation, and then that would have been provided to our attorney and the zoning official.
So if there was some decision by state body, or, you know, in this case, the DEP, or some other similar body that said, hey, you know, you approved this application, but here are the problems with it and it can't be approved that way.
It would go to the applicant and then it would go to our board attorney and our secretary.
Right, but we would have been, it would, it would still come to us. It would not.
It would go to the town, I think. It would go to the clerk. But, but you've got the representation of the applicant's attorney, who is an officer of the court, to say that there was no such directive or information or question provided by the DEP.
Okay.
That's, that's correct. I'm still, I'm still on. And there has been no official determination by the DEP with respect to the LOI that has been requested.
Has there been any unofficial, any less than final communication with regard to wetlands or anything?
Council, Council President, we're, we're going off message here. The, the resolution is adopted. We, it is, right now, it is as it never happened. So the board has no interest in the continued discussion on that.
I, I have an interest in it, Mr. Chair. I asked a very specific question as a follow-up to what Ms. John Basta just stated. I'm happy to accept whatever it is she provides as a response, but I do want to hear that response.
Ms. John Basta?
Not that I'm aware of, Councilman.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Here, that does it for me.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. McGovern, will you swear in the Township Professionals, please?
Yes, I see Mr. Jordan, I see Mr. Hazal. If we could both raise your right hand, could, if you could each raise your right hands, thank you. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
The application before us tonight, PB 24-06 14 Main Street. H, Main Street Holdings LLC, Block 113, Lot 262, 264, and 308, 14 Main Street. The applicant is proposing a three-story mixed-use development with 12 residential dwelling units above, ground floor parking and commercial space, continuation of the previous application for the applicant.
Yes, good evening, Chairman Benjamin Wine of Prime Two Bell and Misselli on behalf of the applicant. First off, I hope everybody's doing all right this evening. I'll be brief in my opening. You know, we've, we've been, this is our fifth meeting on this application, and it is our sincere hope that we can conclude here this evening. The application, as the chairman indicated, is in fact for a three-story mixed-use building, which is a conditional use of which we meet all the conditions at the subject site, along with, with site plan approval and several bulk variances. The bulk of our testimony has been provided already, including through our, our civil engineer, our project architect, our traffic engineer, and our planner. Where we left things last month is that our planner is still on the proverbial dais, so to speak. And, and I believe that she remains under oath and, and that she would be subject to further cross-examination by anybody who hasn't yet asked her any questions. That said, I do want to put on the record as well, that we used this time wisely, as we always do, between the last meeting and this meeting. There was, there were, there were exactly two, if I recall, outstanding, what I'll call, concerns raised by board members and the board professionals. We've had an opportunity to address those concerns, both related to the county and Main Street specifically. So I will have our planner provide just a little bit more testimony, as she's been involved in this project and these conversations. But suffice it to say, they relate to, there was a comment regarding potential access or driveway along Main Street, which the county has determined through conversation that that would absolutely be prohibited. And in no uncertain terms, no matter what the use is here, they would not, they would not be looking for any access to Main Street due to the location of the bus stop, as well as just traffic safety concerns. And the other thing that they, again, informally, as we haven't gone through the full county process yet, but opined on was when the mayor raised the potential concern about pedestrian safety crossing to our, what I'll call, potential overflow lot at the church. We raised the question directly with the county, would they be open to not just a crosswalk, but, but some type of lighted crosswalk? And they jumped at the opportunity for two reasons. One, because it's always nice when an applicant is willing to cover the costs associated with doing that and not the county. And two, they actually indicated that as a result of the bus stop across the street from our property, they felt that irrespective of our application, that would be a tremendous, tremendous safety improvement for anybody on this side of the street, including the residents of Park Drive, who typically, who may run across the street and jaywalk in order to get to that bus stop. So they felt that that would be something that regardless of the application is a huge boon. And of course, we, we, you know, have no issue with that either. So with that, Chairman, what I'd like to do, I'd like to put Mallory Clark back up on the stand, have her put just a couple of minutes of testimony back on the record to remind the board of the, of the testimony, open her back up to continue the questions, and ultimately proceed to public comment and my closing statement.
Mr. Wine, one minute, I'm sorry, administratively, my fault. I'd like to recall Ms. John Basta, Ms. John Basta, PB 24-15 Essex County Country Club, Block 156, Lot, Zone, Lot 1, Zone R2. Would you, what, do you want to adjourn this to next week's meeting?
Yes, please, Mr. Chairman. I understand that the board is holding a meeting on December 11th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the council chambers in person at 66 Main Street. I ask that the Essex County Country Club, related to the poolhouse improvements and expansion, be carried to that meeting with no further notice required.
Dr. Bagoff, Michaela Bennett, who is an attorney and has requested that she be promoted to panelist. This is on an application that she has interest in. I don't know if you want to hear her about this adjournment request or not.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wine, we're going to promote, promote her to the panel, please.
We're doing it now. Thank you. She should be coming in in a second.
Thank you. Let the record show that, let the record show Mayor McCartney has joined the board.
Thank you. Sorry for the delay.
That's okay. Is Mr. Smiraldo here?
Should be any minute.
Okay. Ms. Bennett?
Good evening. Thank you.
Well, just welcome, and just for the record, you are a licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey. Is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Go right ahead, Ms. Bennett. You have the floor.
First, you have several members of the public who wanted to make comments about the resol, rescinding resolution, myself included.
I'm going to stop you right there. You're represented by an attorney. So we, that's who would be making the representation if it's related to the lawsuit.
Ms. McGovern, I just texted him to let him know that you ignored the fact that members of the public are interested in making a comment before this board made their determination whether to approve the applicant's request. We have that right. Now, I have just asked Mr. Turtle Tow to cost us even more money to get on so that this board can hear what we have to say. We have the right to speak to that resolution request, the rescission of that resolution. And I'm going to say one more thing. The representations about the DEP are absolutely false, and I have Oprah information to be able to.
We're going to stop you right there. You're testifying. You're, you're putting things on the, you're testifying right now. You didn't.
I am, no.
Not listen to me.
Chairman Bagoff, I am not. I am an attorney. And when another attorney misrepresents fact that a quasi-judicial board member asked of her, I have an obligation to correct that record.
Ms. McGovern?
We are entitled to speak as the public to this board, Ms. McGovern. If you need to hear that from Mr. Turtle Tow, I have texted him. I was calling him as I kept raising and lowering my hand.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like Ms. McGovern's frozen.
I think she's stuck.
Yeah.
Convenient.
That, that, that's not, that's not reasonable. I expect a little more decorum from you.
Certainly, Chairman.
Thank you.
It looks like she's coming back in.
Okay. She's trying to get back in.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
It wasn't convenient. It was something that my computer did. Okay, this was an, the first part that we heard was just to rescind a prior approval. If you want to be heard about comments and things made and questions answered, I don't know that we.
We're entitled to comment.
All we were talking about was the resolution.
And we are entitled to comment.
I don't know that to be the case on rescinding something that was an approval where people want to, want to go back to the point where there's no application, as if it was never filed.
The public is entitled to comment.
Ms. McGovern, as well, Ms. Bennett is represented by council. I had spoken to council about this request to rescind the approval. He was okay with it, represent that while his clients were okay with it. So I, I, I don't understand the request, and it was an administrative rescission.
We're still entitled to comment.
I disagree, but I leave it to the board's discretion.
I would, we have a very full, excuse me, excuse me. We have a very full agenda. I would suggest that we take this later then because it's not fair to the applicant who was carried and has their witnesses and experts lined up. This was not, this was not anticipated by virtue of our agenda.
It's not public's fault how you made your agenda. We're all here to comment. There's five of us. Several people made sure that they were on because this was on scheduled first. I mean, we don't have long comments, but we want to comment.
Ms. McGovern, I'm going to ask, I'm going to poll the board. Would any comment change your mind on the administrative rescission of an application before us?
Mr. Chair, I, I don't know that we could answer that effectively without knowing what the comment is. But I, I, I think the, the question we should be asking is, does the board want to hear the comment or not?
Well, Council President, this is, the, the board is allowed to have administrative decision in Latin, it's called nunc pro tonc. It's is as it was. We can reverse something if the applicant, who is the person or the, the business that has presented something for the board, they ask for any, for a, for a reason that does not have to be brought to the board, or if they chose, they did, bring the reason to the board and say, we want to undo this. We decided we're not going to go forward with this. Any comment about that can't make us keep this. So, because the applicant owns the resolution. And as the applicant owns the resolution, they decided we don't want to do this.
Well, I'm not challenging that, Mr. Chair. What I'm, what I'm saying is that I think we, as a board, we, one, we've already voted. So I think that vote is done. But two, I think the question is, that you posed, is a question that we, as a board, cannot answer. Is there anything that could change our vote? I'm, I mean, you know, in the realm of possibility, there must be something. But we would not know if there's something without knowing what that something is. So I think, at least for me, the relevant question would be, do we want to hear from the public or not? And then we can decide whether or not that's material.
Mr. Rutherford, with all, with all due respect, the objectors and Ms. Michaela Bennett, throughout the course of all the hearings related to the halfway house, asked that this structure not be constructed, and the applicant has voluntarily rescinded the approval to not construct the halfway house, as was proposed. So I represented what I know with respect to the DEP. I don't know what else there would be to do. The objectors are getting what they want. The structure is not being built.
Ms. John Basta?
I, I totally understand. Just one second, Ms. Bennett. I, I totally understand, Ms. John Basta. I, I, I don't know what they want to say, but the question that the chair asked is, would it change our minds? I don't think that's the proper question to ask. The proper question is, you know, do we want to hear the public comment and are we obligated to hear it? If, if we're not obligated, Mr. Chair, it is your meeting. You are allowed to, to, to run it. But if, if we are obligated, then we should have afforded them the opportunity to speak.
Council President, Council President, as Ms. John Basta said, the, the objectors did not want this to be built. The, and the logic here is, the objectors got what they wished. The applicant is rescinding the resolution, the Planning Board has agreed, and the, the app, the, the objectors got what they wanted. So to listen to more is unfortunately not, not a condition. It is not a condition of hearing an application to be rescinded. So we're going to, I, I understand what you've said, Ms. Bennett. We're going to move on.
Well, Mr. Chair, I will say, and I, and I understand your position, sir. If, to the residents that wanted to speak, if there is information that directly contradicts, and if it's, you know, documented, directly contradicts the basis by which we've taken any vote, including the vote tonight, please do forward it to us. You can send it to the board secretary. She will have each and every board member get a copy.
No, they won't. I'm, I'm sorry, Council President, absolutely not. Council President, Council President, Council President, Council President. I'm going to have, this is a matter of law. The application is undone. The application does not exist before us. Hearing, and hearing any information relating to an application not before us, I want to send, I will have anything sent to our counts, to our council.
Mr. Chair.
And they, they will decide from there.
Well, Mr. Chair, one second, Ms. Bennett. Mr. Chair, my comments with regard to the residents that wanted to speak out, my comment to them is solely with regard to documented evidence that contradicts the base, something that we used as the basis for our vote. If that does not exist, then that, then we'll never get it. If it does exist, I think the board would want to know that there's some information out there that directly contradicts the information upon which we based our vote. And I think it's important for us to know that even after the vote, because then we might want to rescind that vote, just as we rescinded.
We can't, Council President, the, the law is on the applicant's side. You, you have to understand that. The law is on the applicant's side. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. McGovern.
Yes, yes. You can voluntarily withdraw anything and, and move forward. So that's all they're asking for, is that this be withdrawn. But on our agenda, public comment is at the end. That's where this belongs, in my opinion.
Okay. Members of the public can speak out at that. I hope the residents that wanted to comment will stick around for that. I, I just want to reiterate, b-rutherford@westorange.org is my personal email. If the board secretary or the board chair receives information that doesn't want to be permitted, sent to the board, as the council president, I still want to see it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And, and that's absolutely fine. That's absolutely fine. Thank you very much.
I got promoted to panelist because of the adjournment request.
Right.
McGovern, I just, as a point of clarification, want to make sure that I understood what you just said.
Yes.
There, public comment at the end of this meeting, not at the end, not right before the board makes a decision on each individual application?
You're misrepresenting. This was not an application. This was, this was a procedural vote to rescind a prior approval.
I understand.
What I, what I requested was that you be brought up as a panelist because Ms. John Basta requested that the matter, which is listed as number four on our agenda, Essex County Country Club, I do know from emails that I received from you, you have an interest in, and you want to be heard on that. And that was why I requested that you be moved up as panelist, because the request has been made that, and we have another matter definitely going before yours, but at the end of.
Oh, she's frozen again. I was just trying to clarify, Chairman, with her, if she's saying that the public can wait till the end of the meeting to be heard on any matter before you, because I thought that you read.
That we think.
Ms. Bennett, you were, you were promoted because there is an application before us that has just been adjourned to the following meeting.
Yes.
That we, we believed that that is why you wanted to speak, and any member of the public can speak, public comment at the end of that application. However, as you heard, the applicant has requested that it be adjourned to the following meeting.
I thought that Ms. McGovern had stated tonight that we can wait until the end of the meeting for public comment about what occurred during the meeting. Is that accurate or is that not?
That's inaccurate. At, at the end of each resolution, th, this was not an application before us. This was, I'm going to say this for the last time. This was an administrative function of the Planning Board. As an administrative function, the public does not comment. The Planning Board looks at the law through our attorney. The Planning Board looks at the application and decides if it should be rescinded. The Planning Board voted to rescind the application based on the applicant's request. It is an administrative function that does not have public comment. We're going to move on now, and you may stay, or you, you may, again, the applicant, the application for the Country Club will be at the next meeting, at the next regular meeting.
So I, I.
Special meeting. I thought it was the.
Special meeting, special meeting on December 11th, and no additional notice will be required.
And Chairman, Chairman, can I just clarify that if it's, the board is carrying it? I'm sorry, thank you. It's being carried to December 11th.
Ms. Bennett, hang on one minute. Ms. John Basta, go right ahead.
I just want to make sure that everybody that's in attendance, that is, is here related to the poolhouse application for the Country Club knows that it's going to be carried to December 11th, 2024, in person, in the municipal council chambers, and the meeting starts at 6:30 PM. The municipal council chambers is located at 66 Main Street in West Orange.
Yes, thank you. And no additional notice will be required.
And so the reason that I asked to be promoted to panelist on this matter is because there are two jurisdictional issues. One, notice was not sufficient. I know Ms. Judge. I know Ms. John Basta disagrees with that, but she did not make with specificity her notice. She's, and so I, I, there's one jurisdictional issue. You, you're saying that you're going to adjourn it, but her notice was insufficient. The second jurisdictional issue that I'd like to raise with you is that this is, you know, not, should not be before this board. There are two primary uses currently existing on that property. It should be before the zoning board.
You, you may submit a brief to our, uh, board attorney.
I don't need to submit a brief, sir.
Uh, I, I thought we were going to discuss this as a preliminary matter, um, at the next hearing. So you'll be able to be heard at that.
You want me to raise this in person at the next meeting, I can. But jurisdictionally, you do not have, you have two uses.
Ms. Bennett, Ms. Bennett, neither, our planner has not gotten to review your, your submission, nor has he gotten to review Ms. John Basta. Okay. They came in at the why or what, what did you say?
I'm sorry. Your planner has not been able to review.
Review the submission that Ms. John Basta made, and I think you sent something else also, and they.
All I sent was that there were people that wanted to be heard, but.
No, no, I'm talking about the.
A week ago, I raised the issue of notice. More than a week ago, I raised the.
Thanksgiving last week. Okay. So people weren't in the office from.
I raised that issue before, before Thanksgiving.
Well, I'm going to say that our planner has to review it and we'll be here and we'll be in person next week. And we can start with that as an issue if we, if we need to.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. John Basta. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Mr. Wine, I'm sorry. Now you have the floor, sir.
Sure. No problem. Um, yeah, thank you for, uh, for, for coming back. So with that, um, so Chairman, just, just to reiterate for, uh, for Mayor McCartney, who I know just joined. Um, as I indicated, there will be slight testimony from our planner this evening, mainly regarding the, uh, the two issues that were brought up with the county and addressed by the county. Uh, one being, um, their, their prohibition, um, or their strong, uh, yeah, I would even go so far as to say likely prohibition of any curb cut on Main Street for any use that's on this property. Um, given the traffic concerns and the look, and the fact that there's a bus stop here as well as the, uh, as, as it was actually the mayor's, uh, suggestion initially, or, or thought process initially about putting off-site parking at the church, which we agreed to. And then there was the unfortunate accident with the pedestrian, which I think made everybody kind of stop and think, is that a good idea? We brought that up with the county as well, and they, they chomped at the bit, um, to basically say, uh, does this mean you'd be open to putting in a, a crosswalk across here? Um, that would be lighted as well, like with one of those, uh, I guess beams across the top. And we said, yeah, that's actually what we, what we would, uh, tentatively propose. And they said that would be an amazing idea, not just irrespective of your project, because there are people that come from this side of the street to the opposite side of the street to catch the bus on the opposite side anyways. So they would love the opportunity to put one there and they would further love the opportunity for the applicant to pay for it. So they, they saw that as a, uh, as a win-win. Um, again, irrespective of our project, but obviously that would be part and parcel. So what I'd like to do this evening is have Ms. Clark, um, uh, sworn back under oath, present, uh, just a minor update, um, as I indicated, but she obviously being the expert under oath. And, uh, and from there ultimately proceed to continued questioning, public comment, and hopefully, uh, my summation and a conclusion this evening.
Perfect. And Ms. Clark, you know you that you're still under oath.
Yes. And just because we have, uh, changed calendar month, I want to affirm my license is still current and good standing.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Mallory, obviously you gave comprehensive testimony last time, but if you could reorient the board um, in a quick summary and, and obviously speak to this, uh, new development as well.
Yes. So just, um, for the board's recollection and the, and the public's recollection, um, we are proposed a mixed use building um, under the conditional use zoning for a mixed use building in the B two district. Um, we have, there are four provisions associated with the conditional use. We comply with all four of those conditions, but we do require several bulk variances from the B two zoning district. That is essentially, uh, a product of the fact that the B two zoning allows for this conditional use, but has not taken the step of contemplating any adjustment to the bulk standards for the, uh, this conditional use to occur. And what that essentially, um, facilitates is that, um, you have bulk standards that were really written for commercial uses with high, um, vehicular traffic implications and, and demands on site with smaller building footprints. Um, that's what's dictating what's permitted from a bulk standpoint, uh, whereas a mixed use building typology um, typically sees very different bulk standards. Uh, if you recall, we went through some exhibits in the last hearing that, um, just showed some bulk comparisons to places where you haven't gone through the step in the community of adopting those standards. Um, and we do fall very much in line with, um, some of the other mixed use zoning in town. I don't, again, I don't want to just reiterate all my testimony, but just to bring the board's, um, memory ba- back to the forefront here. We have a couple of bulk variances being height and stories. Uh, we are complying in height and feet, but we require an additional half story from the two and a half permitted to three stories. We have, um, setback variances for our yards. So that's side, front and rear yard. Um, and we also require, uh, coverage variance for lot coverage. Um, in terms of the new, um, kind of findings or the new conclusions from the last hearing, Ben stole my thunder a little bit here. He gave you a very extensive, uh, explanation, but, um, we did coordinate with the county. I've, I've spoken with our traffic engineer who had several conversations with, uh, members at the county. And they were, um, very clear that they would not support any version of a curb cut onto Main Street. I know the board had raised several concerns or, or, um, we had had some discussion about whether the curb cut could be brought off Park Drive North to keep traffic off of Park Drive North, um, and the residential street and brought onto Main Street. Uh, we talked about how we weren't sure if that was achievable from, from a, a building standpoint because of the grade change on the site. Um, but that also would require county approval being that this is a county road and that there's a county bus stop or there's a bus stop directly in front of the property, um, at that portion. So they did, um, echo that that would not be something that they would support. And, and that curb cut, that egress wouldn't happen in any form of a project on this property. So that's not tied to the, the mixed use that we're proposing. Um, it's that any form of, of a new curb cut on this property, which, uh, without the conditional use would be a commercial use, would feed its traffic through Park Drive North. So as our traffic engineer testified a couple of meetings ago, um, we have a relatively low intensity traffic. Condition that would occur with the mixed use building typology compared to many of the permitted uses within the BT zone, B two zone. So we do think we're actually generating less traffic onto Park Drive North, um, than an alternative use. And, and then just for clarity, um, per conversations with the county, it's clear that regardless, that traffic would be circulated through Park Drive North. Um, the second outcome of that meeting, as Mr. Wine has explained, was that, um, we raised the, the safety concerns of the pedestrian crossing across Main Street. Um, and that, again, that's not isolated to, you know, the property or the project, um, on its own, uh, as evidenced by the accident of, a little over a month ago at this point, um, you know, that those safety concerns are there today. Um, and so the county, um, acknowledged that this is a very, you know, difficult crossing and a very wide street, high speed street. Um, and that the crossing demand is there inherently when you have a bus stop on either side of the street. So that the bus stop going in the bus stop going in the other direction does, um, also occur directly across the street from this property. Sometimes they're staggered a little bit. We have to, um, right at this point, which creates, you know, a, a higher point of conflict with pedestrian crossings. And, and as we said, the four lanes of traffic. Um, they were very, um, much in support of the idea of a crosswalk. Um, you know, we, we make clear that in addition to just a standard crosswalk, we want some sort of additional pedestrian safety measures as been discussed with some sort of lighting. Um, there are a number of technologies, as was discussed last meeting for warning systems. Um, I'm sure you have them many all over, you know, the community. Um, so we will work with the county to arrive at what is the best solution for this roadway in particular. Um, but they were very amenable to that being, um, a part of the project. Again, regardless of the project, they were happy to support, um, that endeavor. And then as part of the project, um, as, as Mr. Wine had stated, very happy to have the applicant, um, be a part of implementation there. Um, so those are the two, I think, two new takeaways and considerations for the board. I just want to remind the board, um, again, I don't want to repeat my testimony too heavily, but just, um, since we have had a month pass, uh, remind the board that I do think we're bringing several benefits, um, with the proposed project before you tonight. Um, some of those being that we are going to have, um, significant stormwater detention improvements with this detention system under the slab. We are proposing substantial green roof, um, for additional offset of the coverage variance. Um, we are going to have substantial sidewalk improvements, um, particularly on Main Street, where, where we will be removing a large portion of the retaining wall, opening the sidewalk up where the bus stop is and bringing in a new, um, appropriately sized commercial space as consistent with the conditional use zoning. Um, we will be, um, now, uh, including pedestrian safety improvements. We had proposed several pedestrian safety measures related to our garage in particular, but we will be, um, I think expanding that pedestrian safety improvement across Main Street corridor, um, which is a significant benefit to the neighborhood as a whole, not just, just the project itself. Um, and in general, I really think this is a, a, a very clear cut, um, situation where the benefits of the project outweigh the detriment. So, um, I, again, I don't want to over, uh, repeat itself from the last meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have based on, um, last hearing and this hearing. And with that, I think I'll, I'll wrap it up so we can, um, see if there's any further points of clarity that you need from me.
Thank you, Mallory. Yeah, Chairman, that's all I really wanted to elicit from Ms. Clark at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Ms. Clark, okay. Um, so we'll have board question, uh, Vice Chairman Guarino, do you have any questions for Ms. Clark on the testimony?
Not this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Say, Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Ms. Clark on the testimony?
I don't have any questions, but I wanted to thank Mr. Wine, uh, for the update. I appreciate that. Sorry for that I was late. And thank you, Mallory, for that summary.
Thank you. Council President Rutherford, do you have any questions from Ms. Clark on the testimony?
Uh, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Do you have any questions from Ms. Clark on the testimony?
No, sir.
Was that a yes or a no, sir?
That was a no. Thank you.
That was a no. So, okay, cool. Mr. Wilkes, do you have any questions from Ms. Clark on the testimony?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Do you have any questions from Ms. Clark on the testimony?
I just want to let everybody know that I listened to the November 6th, uh, testimony, yeah, November 6th. No.
Yes, November.
Yeah, yeah, November 6th. I'm sorry. November 6th testimony, I filled out that form, sent it into Yamalat earlier, a little bit earlier this afternoon. Uh, I, I, the only comment I think I, or questions that I have. I, I know that there's the seven unit townhouse just to the south of this. Their driveway is on Park Drive South. So those people, when they leave, they can go straight out to Main Street. But when they come in, they got to come in Park Drive North and go all the way around to get into their driveway. So that's seven parking spaces. This is 14 now. So Mallory, do you have any comment on what, you know, the difference between, I guess, the 14 and the seven, or the amount of traffic that's going to be generated? And how that's going to change the way of life of people on Park Drive North and South?
Um, I, I don't think it's going to be significant. I think, um, you know, our traffic engineer had testified, um, I believe his estimated trip generation was about five trips, uh, an hour at peak hours um, in and out of, of the garage. And, you know, I think that could happen if someone in a single family home had a party, you know, on any given day and you're not, I don't think that that's going to cause a major, major disruption um, to, to the neighbors in terms of traffic flow or demand. We've, um, I think there's been a lot of conversation about, um, the township taking some steps to, um, handle zone parking or permit parking on the street to help reduce, uh, concerns about, you know, some competition or friction there with, with the new building coming in. So I think that that, you know, there's a clear process there to address those concerns outside of, you know, the purview of the board. But I, I believe that, um, it's going to be negligible. And, and as you said, I think, um, given the climate and today, like we, we don't even know how, we don't see, I think, the level of trip, chip, trip generation that we're used to at these peak hours anymore. Just given that many people, uh, work from home these days and, and on staggered, you know, in staggered manners. So it's a little bit of a harder predictor in, in a sense, but, um, you know, we use the numbers that industry standards point us to, and I don't think that those numbers are a point of concern. Um, if you look at those townhomes, you said seven, and, and we have a trip generation estimate of five. So we're probably going to land consistent with what they see and generate each day.
And then ju- so if people were to park at the church, I guess if they parked at the southern end toward the William Street exit of the church parking lot across the street, then those people might tend to walk out and probably cross at the Dunkin' Donuts crossing that the public safety, uh, am I breaking up?
Nope, you're good. I can hear you.
Okay. Cause I keep, my, I'm going to turn on my video for a second. So, you know, there, there is that crossing. I'm assuming that's the type of crossing that the county is going to want to see. Uh, the, the ladder stripes, the, uh, rapid flashing rectangular beacons, uh, that could be actuated by a pedestrian when they're ready to cross. And I'm sure that we'll, we'll somehow we'll hear from the county eventually, and they'll maybe show us what they want to do there. Hopefully we'll, we'll be all right with that.
Yeah, I would imagine it would be something consistent with that. And, and, you know, given that we would be implementing something directly in front of the property, that would probably become the preferred point of crossing for residents of this building in particular.
And then, yeah, and then what I heard, I think from one of the residents that lives on Park Drive, either north or south, I can't remember which one, uh, that there are people that maybe live over on the Ashwood Terrace side and they park on Park, uh, Drive North. But if we, if we implement a parking permit for only people with an address of Park Drive North and Park Drive South, do you, what do you think? How do you think that will improve the situation of, of the parking along Park Drive North and Park Drive South?
Yeah, I think if there, if there is, again, like friction associated with some neighboring streets already, um, the zone parking or the permit parking for this immediate loop, we'll call it, um, would, would improve that. And, you know, that's ultimately becomes an enforcement issue, right? Um, assuming that, you know, people follow the signs, um, for parking restrictions, then that should really reduce the friction. Um, at the very least, highly discourage that, that behavior.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Vice Chairman Guarino.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to go to Mr. Klein's question. There already is a mid-block crosswalk in that area that, that we put in two and a half years ago for the Edison Middle School. It's a flashing light, a manually activated plus crosswalk symbols. So that's already in place in that area. Just wanted to let Mr. Klein know that that's already there, sir.
I know. That's what I was, that's what I, that's why I said it. There's already one there a block away.
Okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Council President Rutherford has his hand raised, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to correct, um, the characterization of the townhouses. I believe there are only three townhouses there, not seven.
Uh, so. I'm sorry, seven part, seven parking spaces, I meant. I'm sorry, seven parking spaces. This is 14 parking spaces.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wine and Ms. Clark. Um, Mr. Klein, Mr. Klein already touched on it and actually, Mr. Guarino, just added to it, um, regarding the design of the crosswalk, you know, I'm just saying that would, of course, be in consultation with the county, but Mr. Wine, I think you mentioned overhead lighting, and I assume that would be from both ends of the, uh, or yeah, both ends of the crosswalk.
Yeah, there are different, uh, different design options. Um, what Ms. Clark indicated is, is likely for consistency. It would look similar to the other flashing beacon, but, um, ultimately and candidly, you know, that, that's something that we're going to work, we're, we're going to have to work with the county on how they want it designed. Um, you know, and obviously that will be run by your professionals as well, but, you know, they're the ones who are going to really make that decision.
I just want a clarification that you're going to pay, your client's going to pay for that, correct?
It, it's, it's working with the county, but the county was, uh, pretty adamant that they would, they would like at the very minimum, a, a strong contribution. More than likely, we would cover it though, uh, entirely. But that's, again, that's going to be, you know, negotiated with the county, but we take no objection to it. It's just simply, there's also, not to get too legal, there's also, you know, contribution laws, as you know, Ms. McGovern, on, on what um, property owners are allowed to contribute. There's prorata shares, things like that. But, um, yeah, but the, the sentiment was we take no issue with it. Um, and it'll ultimately be up to the county how they'd like us to proceed. But yes.
I, I'm just preparing the conditions. I just want to make sure my language is right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, no, that, that clarifies it. Thank you both, uh, Mr. Wine and Ms. Clark.
Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Capford, do you have any questions, Ms. Clark, on her testimony?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Clark and, uh, Mr. Delain. Um, the question I had was about, uh, just clarifying, you may have said this already, but Ashwood Terrace, is that where the crosswalk would be?
Um, I don't think we've definitively set a spot. We would have to work with the county because, to make sure we're not disrupting the bus stops. Um, so they'll have the mapping of the actual zones for the buses are designated to. And usually there's a buffer from that that you'll place across walking. So we would work that. But from, um, and Ben, please correct me, my understanding of the coordination thus far is that it would be, um, uh, directly in front of our property on some level. It's just a matter of where it's being cited.
That's correct. That was the intention, um, that. That's correct. That was the intention. Um, that was the conversation. Um, but to Ms. Clark's point, again, it's based on distances from bus stops and things. So, but the idea would be in really at this intersection of Main Street and Park Drive in some capacity.
Okay, at, at Park Drive. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cap.
Yeah, that was, that was it.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, do you have any questions from Ms. Clark on her testimony?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions from Ms. Clark on a testimony?
None at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions, Ms. Clark, on a testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm seeing several.
Okay.
We have Ms. Love Gillard. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Love Gaylord. I'm at 31 Park Drive North.
Go right ahead. Do you have any questions, please?
Okay, yes. Well, the thing is this, I thought that this was the last meeting where we'd be able to give our testimony rather than question, what structure is it today?
I, I'm sorry, can you say it again?
She wants to do public comment, Dr. Bagoff. She, she wants to know when public comment is happening.
A- as soon as we're done with all the questions from Ms. Clark and Mr. Wine finishes up.
Okay, so the question from, I'm, I hope it's a question. With Ms. Clark, when you were giving your testimony, you said that the benefits outweigh the, any detriments. And one, I want to say, just because you said it doesn't make it true, because there's a few benefits that are very light with a lot of unanswered questions and maybe is and possibly still going on. So I wanted to ask if the mayor or someone on the line can answer, what is the financial benefit to West Orange for this fixture to come to our area? How does it benefit West Orange from the township perspective?
Ma'am, ma'am, at this time, the goal is to ask Ms. Clark questions about her testimony.
Well, I guess I don't have any more because I, I believe the testimony was very light and superficial every time it's, she was, she's been here. I know she's only been working with what she has, but I'll, I'll fold into the next part because I want to ask that question to Mayor McCarthy, and then I have my own comments. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Ms. Clark on a testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Donna and Alan.
Okay.
Please state your name and address for the record. Donna or Alan? All right, we'll, we'll come back to them.
Okay. Do any of the members?
Susan Lesnick?
Go right ahead.
Name and address for the record.
Susan Lencic, E Rock Avenue, a former resident of the Park Drive Loop. Okay, um, Ms. Clark, thank you for coming back. We appreciate that. Uh, you testified that you were familiar with West Orange, is that right? Yes. And you referred to the site at your previous appearance as having unique features. What were you, were you referring to as unique?
Can you, do you happen to have a little bit more context of that statement? I mean, I
Well, no, you, you made that statement yourself.
Right, I know, but it's, it's hard to, without understanding, you know, again, we're a month removed, so I'm trying to remember specifically if you remember what I was speaking to in that instance. But in terms of the major unique feature that becomes a design challenge in this sense is the topography of the site. So we have a substantial grade change from one end of the site to the other. Um, and that has led to, uh, limitations and necessities in terms of how we grade and enter the site, both at the pedestrian level and at the vehicular egress level. That's my recollection of, of what I was speaking to at that point in time um, in terms of unique features. Um, but, but if you, if you had a, a more specific question, I'm happy to try to elaborate if that wasn't exactly what you were looking for there.
Do you know of, or did you notice any other properties along Main Street that have a three-story building immediately south of a steep uphill grade?
Yes, the property directly across the street.
Uh, I'm sorry, immediate, you mean, okay, but, uh, I'm saying immediately south of an uphill, of a hill.
Oh, it's on the same hill.
So it's, but, but there's no road next to us. Uh, it's not south of a road. It's just a driveway there.
So the, the property directly across Park Drive North is a four-story. It's on the same hill, so it's on the Park Drive North.
But it's, but it's not south of the road.
No, it's on the north side of the street. That's, but it's on, it's on the hill, same hill.
Um, would you consider that to be a unique feature, at least something worthy of consideration?
The fact that we're on the south side of the hill?
Yes.
In terms of what we're proposing, I don't think it would have a significant bearing on the major parameters of the project, meaning how we approach the design.
Okay, but at the last meeting, you state, you testified that you did not do a shadow study related to the development. Why not? Why was the shadow study not done?
A shadow study was not a requirement of the township's code, nor was it requested by any of the township professionals throughout the review process, so we have not prepared one.
Would there, would any other reason trigger a shadow study?
Typically, in my practice, shadow studies are either required within the code. So there's different thresholds often with shadow studies where if you're proposing a certain height, a certain number of stories, seeking a variance, a height variance of a certain degree, you might, um, trigger the requirement of a shadow study as part of your site plan application submission. Um, in other instances, township professionals upon review may ask for a shadow study to confirm um, certain aspects of the project and/or, um, implications of any variances.
Um, okay, you referred to the shade that's cast on Park Drive North by the proposed building as, quote, speculative. Is that correct? That is the word that I heard.
Well, I'm, I'm saying because I have not completed an actual shadow study, I can't definitively say where the shadow is going to fall. We can speculate that we know general patterns of the sun, and I know the height of the building and what the general implications of buildings of that size are, but without completing a shadow study as a professional, I cannot put definitive testimony on record as to shadow implications. I would have to complete a shadow study to provide that testimony.
Okay, so that, but then, uh, you would agree that if there had been one done, there'd be no need to speculate. The facts would be there.
Sure.
Okay, uh, during your testimony, you noted that the proposed setback at the west side of property is eight feet. You also noted that the median setback building to building on the loop is 15 feet. And so the eight-foot setback is not, quote, wildly out of character with the area. But is it not true that the standard for a setback from a commercial property along Main Street to a residential property is much different from the standard for setbacks between residences? So is it not, in fact, out of character with the norm?
It's, I wouldn't say it's out of character because the zone in particular doesn't, um, contemplate that relationship, meaning that change in use. So in the, in the standard, the bulk standards that do exist for the B2 zoning, which is the commercial zone, correct, that our property is under, um, and, you know, the properties that front Main Street, um, that zoning does not have, um, additional setback requirements or, or, um, alternative setback requirements when adjoining other uses. It's just, this is the side yard, you're regardless of, of, regardless of whatever use you're abutting.
Okay, um, by the way, the clock was running during your answer. I think I should get more time because
Go right ahead. Go, go right ahead. That's fine.
Thank you. Uh, on page two of your report, you state that the project proposes an appropriate building envelope. Could you please explain how it is an appropriate envelope when the permitted lot coverage is 60% but the proposed building would cover 82% of the lot? How is that appropriate in a B2 zone?
So I think I gave substantial testimony at the last meeting as to how the B2 zoning does not contemplate alternative bulk standards for the additional use. And I provided several exhibits um, that I took the, uh, the board and the community through, looking at other zones within the district where this, this, um, particular conditional use in, or the mixed-use building has been, um, has had bulk standards adopted. And I showed that we are very consistent with those standards. So by my analysis and my practice as a professional, I believe that we are proposing something that's appropriate because we are actually below the thresholds of the other mixed-use zoning, which we think is the appropriate measure to take, given that we are abutting a lower-density residential neighborhood. So we have a, a middle ground, if you will, between the maximum of what those zones actually permit and what this zoning calls for that we, um, are not compliant with. But what I'm saying is we're not compliant because the zoning, there's a little bit of a uh, gap in the zoning, if you will, um, by not having alternative bulk standards. And so we took what we thought was the reasonable approach by scaling in between, um, other mixed-use zoning and our property and proposing something that's consistent, but also smaller, um, than what those other mixed-use zones allow.
Okay, um, all right. And following up on Love Gaylord's, uh, question uh, about the benefits of supposedly outweighing the detriments. So the question is, for whom do the benefits outweigh the detriments? Does, does that include the residents of the adjacent properties?
I believe there are improvements that we are making that do benefit the neighborhood as a whole. I think we spoke to tonight, um, about the pedestrian crossing, the new crossing on Main Street. That is not a benefit. That is a community-wide benefit. That is not a benefit that's unique to or restricted to the users or residents of this building. I believe that the commercial strait, uh, space, which is a public use at this corner, um, cited adjacent to the bus stops is a community benefit. I believe that, um, the additional stormwater measures that we will be implementing on the site, given that we are a site with extreme topography, is a benefit because we will retain our stormwater on-site um, in heavy rain events and have a slow release into the larger city system, and that creates, um, neighborhood-wide benefits, yes.
Okay, but, but do the benefits, uh, uh, are they for the residents of, let's say, the adjacent properties from their perspective? Would you see that would be a benefit?
I think I just testified to several aspects in which I think that the benefits, uh, radiate beyond the pro, the property specifically. So I can't subjectively say whether a neighbor would value one or another. What I can say is from a performative standpoint, um, there are improvements that we will make with the project as proposed that go beyond our property and benefit the neighborhood as a whole.
You testified that, uh, it is not going to make somebody feel like something very out of character is popping up in their neighborhood. Do you believe that the 170 local residents who physically signed a hard copy petition opposing the proposed development believe that the benefits outweigh the detriments?
Chair, Chairman, do you mind if I just
Mr. Wine?
Ms. Lencic to maybe rephrase that? And I, 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 I respect the fact that she's not an attorney. Um, but that if she can rephrase it in a way that's not hypothetical or speculative about a, a, a document that's not part of the evidential record?
Fair enough. Go right ahead, Ms. Lencic, if you can.
Well, we, I, I, I said what I needed to. That's, 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 uh, good enough. Uh, I see, I got that information there. But now, uh, my remaining questions are for the mayor. I understand that we're not supposed to ask that, but considering uh, the questions that are raised regarding the parking permits, would there be a point at which we can ask her questions? Because those are relevant questions.
Uh, I'm going to ask our counsel first.
The question is whether she can ask the mayor questions now?
Correct.
Well, yeah, regarding the, the parking permits, because, because it was the mayor who brought up the idea of the parking permits, and that really raises many questions. I think before anybody could, uh, really make a vote on this, that we'd need those questions to be answered.
Well, you see, I, um, I I, I'm sure the mayor has information, but I don't know whether she has all of the information. So, but I don't want to speak for the mayor. Um, I, I think at some point it would be appropriate, but I think we want to finish this witness.
Okay.
And move on.
Yes.
Okay, uh, all right, I'm, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Ms. Clark about her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have somebody named Leslie.
Okay.
Leslie? Leslie, are you there?
Will we come back to Leslie?
Sure.
Do any other members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand for Ms. Clark. Please, about her testimony, please raise your hand and be identified.
We have Park Drive South is the label.
Uh, Sandra, Park Drive South.
Your name and address?
Sandra, Park Drive South.
Sandra, what's your last name?
Thorny, Thorny, sorry. Sandra Thorny.
Great, your question.
Okay, um, so Ms. Clark, you, uh, testified in your last meeting, uh, comparing, uh, mixed-use building in the, um, in the neighborhood. And I just wanted to ask, uh, you, your comparison was with a building that was about a mile away? And I wanted to know, why did you not use, uh, a building that is within the exact proximity of the proposed building to compare your?
Because the objective was to make a comparison specifically with the mixed-use typology, um, meaning other, I took a look at where in the town, um, have, has there been formally adopted zoning, whether that's through redevelopment or, or, um, traditional zoning um, for the mixed-use use? Because if I were looking im- immediately adjacent, um, that doesn't, that doesn't capture the issue that we're trying to, uh, help the board understand that we face with the lack of bulk standards for our use. So it, it's, it was driven by the use, not by the proximity in this, in this particular case, because the conditional use was adopted as permitted without the bulk standards.
However, the buildings that are mixed-use, and you consider buildings in the neighborhood mixed-use, right? The one that's directly across the street?
Those I was, um, analyzing for the purposes of the commercial space. So that was a, a separate portion of the conversation. The board had raised some concerns about the size of the commercial space or wondering if the size of the commercial space was going to be sufficient. Um, so that was an analysis of the immediate neighborhoods, commercial spaces. Some, some of those buildings may be mixed-use. Some of them may not, meaning some may have, you know, apartments above um, the ground floor commercial space, but they, it's not what the zoning actually permits.
So is it that you needed to use a larger building to compare this building to because it is significantly larger than the other mixed-use building in the neighborhood?
It's, it's because we were looking at where their contemporary design standards that the township has taken the step of adopting. Those buildings are pre-existing non-conforming buildings, meaning that they were built before the zoning um, that exists today in most cases, or they went through other channels and the jurisdiction of other boards to get alternative approvals. We were looking at where has the board in recent years adopted mixed-use zoning standards to capture contemporary design standards? This is things like, um, typically what we see in these kinds of projects are uh, commercial spaces on the ground floor in addition to enclosed parking or parking garages on the ground floor with apartments above. So that's the prototype that's called for in the zoning, and that's the prototype that we were matching with throughout the township.
So I think it was Mr. Alper who made that, um, comparison that the building that you compared it to, is it a more commercialized area versus this rather residential area?
We, but, um, our, our property is not in a residential zone. Our property is in a commercial zone. So we felt it was appropriate comparison.
So would you say, if, if we were supposed to stand across where the billboard's at, and you place your building on the property, would you say that this building that you're proposing looks like any other building or house to the left, to the right, up and around, uh, Park Drive north, southwest, or on Main Street?
Sorry, I don't want to cut you off, but, um, I just want to make sure you finished with the question. I don't want to speak over you.
Yeah, I'm finished, if you heard it off.
Yes, I did. Thank you. Um, so again, the point of comparison for this is not the residential properties up Park Drive South in terms of, um, i- in terms of your question. The zoning doesn't call for that match. The zoning is for a commercial property. So we're looking at the commercial character of, along the Main Street corridor. The zone on the homes behind the corner property are, is a completely different zoning that calls for a completely different um, use and a completely different, um, scale of building. So what we're looking at is this is commercial zoning, and then we're also looking at the, um, conditional use provision within that zoning for the mixed-use typology. So that's where our point of comparison has been throughout. Where, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to take that zoning or take that conditional use and make the point of comparison, or the point of which um, we're trying to make a building work, a single-family home.
Okay, did you look at, uh, the setback, the building that you, um, were talking to Suzanne about, um, what's the setback from that building to the property line of the first house, um, and Park Drive North?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head. If the board gives me a second, I can quickly look on Google Earth and give an estimation, but I, um, don't have the survey information for that property. the board gives me a second, I can quickly look on Google Earth and give an estimation, but I don't have the survey information for that property, so I can't give a definitive answer on that. And you're talking about the apartment building across Park Drive North, is that correct?
Right, right. And what's the what's the setback that you guys are asking for related to the the house that's directly on Park Drive North behind this building?
The single-family home adjacent to us?
Yes.
That's it's varying because the property line is not straight at that point. It angles, but it varies. So the tightest point, which is at the street at Park Drive North, is a little over eight feet, and then the widest point, which is more at the interior, or I guess what would be that that home's backyard, is, give me one second, I just want to make sure I have the right number here for you, gets to about 13 feet.
And are, do you think you're able to find what's the setback for the housing on the property?
It would take me a few minutes. Let me look quickly if I can see. I know it's built to the sidewalk at the front and side. I just am not sure that that's the case at the rear. Second here, I can get an approximation. I want to be clear for the record that this is an approximation based on NJDEP data. This is not based on a survey. About 18 feet.
So pretty much larger than what you guys are proposing for the building across the street?
It's larger, yes. We have, like I said, 13 feet at the core and eight feet at the street.
Would you say that that gives a little bit more privacy to the building? That, to the back of the building that is directly on Park Drive North, it allows for a little bit more, right? But you guys are asking.
It's a further setback in terms of like the windows, but I can't speak to like how that rear yard is used. I don't know in terms of its relationship to the that adjacent residential home.
Okay, well, the point is, it's larger than what you guys are requesting or asking for. All right. I think my other question is regarding, and I heard the introduction at the first, that there's not going to be an entrance on Park Drive on Main Street. However, I recall that Mr. Wine had suggested that it would cause more traffic. However, turning onto Park Drive North and waiting for a garage door to open, would that still not cause significant traffic and holdup?
Well, and can I can I answer that question if it was directed? Yeah, and just to be clear, it wasn't that it would cause more traffic by putting a curb cut on Main Street. The comment that I made was specifically in consultation with the county, who is, you know, for lack of a better term, in charge of Main Street and any improvements within Main Street. They felt that it would not be, that it would create a traffic concern from a safety perspective, as well as, you know, due to the location of the bus stop. So it, you know, the traffic testimony was already testified to by our traffic engineer and reiterated by Ms. Clark regarding our expected trip generation of approximately five vehicles in the peak hour. That was already testified to. That wouldn't necessarily change with a curb cut on Main Street. What I had indicated is that the county would not permit us to put a curb cut on Main Street.
No further questions.
Okay, do any of the members of the public have any questions for Ms. Clark on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have, hang on one minute. MK, did she speak yet?
I don't think so.
No, I haven't.
Okay, great. Then you're up next. Thank you.
Thank you. MK Adams, Park Drive South. Thank you so much, everybody, for being here. I just want to circle back to what Ms. McGovern responded in response to Sue Lenchek's question, because I have some questions for Mr. Wine, and I also have a question for the mayor, but you want us to you want us to finish questioning Ms. Clark, and then we'll come back to that?
It's up to the chairman, but that would be my suggestion.
Yes, I'm going to follow that suggestion. Let's go right ahead.
All right. Ms. Clark, we were talking about that crosswalk, and there was, Mr. Wine said it would be lit, and I just want to clarify, is it going to be an additional crosswalk near the intersection of Park Drive North? Is it going to replace the crosswalk that Mr. Guarino mentioned, the one that intersects at William in front of the Duncan? Will there be two crosswalks in that section or one? What is the proposal?
So the proposal will be for us to add one additional crosswalk, and within the vicinity of that intersection, like we stated earlier, we don't know exact placement yet. That'll take coordination with the county, but it would be in the vicinity of the Park Drive North Main Street intersection, and it's one in addition to the existing. It's not in place of.
Okay, but you also mentioned that it would probably have the blinking warning lights. Is that correct?
Some sort of pedestrian warning system, yes. There's like several technologies that you can use. It's, and a lot of the times, it's just that what the county has had the best success with. You know, they'll have their preferences, but we're willing to work with them to go beyond just a standard striped crosswalk.
Has the county or anyone in West Orange studied the efficacy or the rate of compliance of the blinking crosswalk at William?
I can't answer that.
You don't know? I thought maybe that was in discussion with the county. Maybe Mr. Wine can answer that when we get to him later. So, Ms. Clark, on page five of your report, the third bullet about halfway down the page, you wrote that the project is proposing a use that is consistent with other mixed-use apartments located in the surrounding area, and then you you mentioned in proximity to public transportation. Is that an assumption that tenants of 410 will use public transit?
No, I don't think that's what's represented in that statement. What I mean is, what contemporary planning practices and planning guidelines, really from state direction, and as adopted in many municipalities, including West Orange, call for is the citing of higher-density residential uses in proximity to existing public transportation infrastructure, meaning where you have the ability to move more people more efficiently, and you've already invested in that infrastructure, it makes more sense to cite higher-density development.
But without assuring that tenants in those higher-density areas would actually use public transit?
Correct. There's no burden or obligation for a developer or a tenant or a resident of any kind to make any kind of commitment to use public transportation.
Do you know in your work, does an individual's income impact their use of public transit?
Oh, that wasn't testified to. We're gonna, I'm not gonna allow that.
No, fine. I was just I was just asking because it was.
Yeah, that's okay. We're going to talk about the testimony she provided, please.
Oh, sure. Now, forgive me, Ms. Clark, you may not know this, but we have asked this of other experts, and we have, the question has been punted from one expert to another. But do you know how long construction will take for this building?
Unfortunately, with the name Planner comes the, you know, the preliminary side of things. I'm not a construction management expert, so I can't speculate. I'm sorry.
So then maybe, thank you for answering honestly. Mr. Wine, who, Mayor, Chairman, who can we ask these questions of?
I can I can try to get you an answer to that. I actually believe that we did put that on the record at one point, but I can I can confirm that with my client. That's fine.
May I speak to Mr. Wine now since he responded to me?
Go back to asking questions to Ms. Clark.
Well, I think she's going to, some of my questions, I think, are going to be the same that have been punted from expert to expert, and she just said that she, as Planner, might not know the answers to them. But Mr. Wine volunteered that he might know the answer, so I'm asking, may I speak to Mr. Wine now?
He he said he may, he'll be able to get you the answer to that specific question, how long it's going to take to the construction. All other questions now go back to Ms. Wine, Ms. 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 Clark, please.
Well, Ms. Clark didn't testify about the garage door, but Mr. Wine did last meeting, so I need, I would like to follow up with some questions to Mr. Wine about the garage.
Okay, I I'm going to stop this right now. Questions that have been asked and answered, we're done. We're not going to repeat them. We're not, I'd like you to listen to me for a second. Listen to me for a second, please, and then you may speak. I'll let you talk. Please let me talk. I want the public to understand the goal of this is that the board hears the information. The public can ask questions, but the board hears the information, so we can make an informed decision based on what the experts say and your questions of their experts. Then we make a decision. Repeating the questions again and again after five meetings is not moving us forward. So unfortunately, if you didn't hear the answer the first time, I understand that, and you can go back and listen to the tapes. So I'd like you to, I'd like you to craft questions based on what Ms. Clark presented. Mr. Wine may, at the end of her testimony, decide to answer questions that the public has. That is up to him. Okay, so let's focus on Ms. Clark right now, and you have the floor again.
Mr. Wine, you made comments at the last meeting that don't follow with the with the progress of the meetings that we have had so far. I would like to ask you a few clarification questions when it is appropriate.
Thank you.
When it's appropriate.
Great. Are you done with Ms. Clark? Do you have more questions for her?
I believe that the questions I have remaining have not yet been answered by anyone, but Ms. Clark did not bring up the topics of the questions that I'd like to ask.
Okay, so then we'll wait for Mr. Wine at the end and see if he or any of his experts are able to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Ms. Clark on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Quincy, Quincy's iPad.
Hi. I'm at Park Drive North, Five Park Drive North.
They have your name?
Quincy.
Last name?
Kersh.
Address?
Five Park Drive North.
Great.
So I'm basically catty-corner to the project. So Ms. Clark, that's her name. She stated several times that she didn't believe there would be significant traffic or parking issues with this project. And it's my understanding that there was never a formal study done on this. Is that correct?
That's not correct. There was a traffic report completed, and there was traffic engineer testimony at a prior meeting.
And they, and and they were independent, or they were hired by the person, by the
Applicant.
By the applicant, right? They were hired by the applicant?
Yes.
So it's not, I mean, hiring a professional witness in a court case, right? Like, you know, they'll basically say whatever you pay them to say.
I I'm sorry, that that you're impugning their reputation. They're hired because they present information based on their expertise, and then our experts review that information.
Okay, well, so be that, you know, she keeps saying that she feels that it's not going to make a difference. I'm pretty sure we have a pretty big consensus of people that sign the petition.
Ma'am, ask a question, ask a question, please. You're testifying. You may do that. You may you make comments at the end, but please ask a question to Ms. Clark about her testimony.
Okay, well, my question is, if this, if this the speculation on the traffic report is incorrect, and we start to have more accidents and more parking problems after this project is finished, what's our recourse? Do we have any recourse? Or we just have to throw up our hands and say, you know, oh, gee, I guess they were wrong, and, you know, we're just going to have to live with this.
So
Mallory, if you can answer, I don't know. But if you can answer.
So in terms of if there are enforcement issues after a project is implemented, that goes under the operational body, meaning the the division within the town that's responsible for enforcement. That's probably a combination of traffic, safety, police, and emergency response, and go ahead.
So our recourse would be to sue the town for for not doing their job correctly?
I I think the
What I can, what I can say comfortably to that, because I think it's a procedural question. When we file an application with any board in the state of New Jersey, including your planning board, it is required to be reviewed by anyone and everyone, any any and every agency within the township that is tasked with reviewing such applications. That would include police, fire, DPW, engineering, planning, traffic engineering, and just about everybody. And we receive several comment letters, which we have received. We also have the benefit of hearing from those professionals, specifically the engineer and the planner at in the public session, which you'll probably hear from from both of them here this evening. So, you know, this is vetted at a lot of levels, so I just I just want to be clear, because it sounds like you're asking a procedural question, which is perfectly fine, and I'm glad you're asking it. But it's it's not just the applicant says a bunch of things based on information that looks good to the applicant, and it goes unchecked. That's not how the procedure works.
Okay, well, that's good to know, but it but be that as it may. I mean, that sounds pretty good, I guess, but if they, if they in fact are all wrong, like, or, you know, whatever.
Ma'am, ma'am, what
Then what can we do about it afterwards?
This is hypothesizing about, the first order of business would be to the town council and to the mayor's office, and if it's a matter of violation of a permit, if there are permits or parking, then it would be a police action. The police department would remove any cars that are double parked or not or not parked legally. So those are always things within the 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 ability of the town and town government. Do you have any questions for Ms. Clark on her testimony this evening?
Well, the only other question is, she she says that she she believes that the benefits to the town outweigh the
Detriments.
Detriments. But wouldn't we get the same benefits if there were less apartments built than we, I mean, couldn't we get the same benefits with six apartments as we could with 12 apartments? We'd still get the improved sidewalk, and the, we could still get the crosswalk and whatever. I mean, why, why, you know, why do we have to you know, have all these variances and have this giant building built really closely to the other buildings around it? I mean, to get the benefits. The benefits are going to be there anyway.
So that's the question for Ms. Clark. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Clark?
So I can't speculate until like design alternatives. What I can tell you is that some of these benefits are associated with the size of the project. Meaning, meaning there's a there's a certain level of development standard that happens when you transition to a mixed-use building like this with at this scale. I can't spec, there are versions of the world. Sure, you could have the, you know, most altruistic person ever come in and fund all these improvements with no development. You know, you could speculate endlessly on what the all all the scenarios are. What we're called to do in the context of our application is say, based on what we are proposing before this board, we believe that we meet the negative, positive, negative criteria on the variances that we seek, and that the benefits of the project outweigh the detriment. So when we make that statement, we're talking specifically to the proposal at hand that the board is called to take action and vote on. Not in comparison to, you know, a myriad of other alternatives.
All right, I'm down. I'll wait until the comments section at the end to give my opinion.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Ms. Clark on her testimony?
Yes, we do. Hang on, sorry. We have Steven L. We're going to try him again.
Okay.
Hi, Steven, can you hear us?
Okay, yeah, just unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Steve Malinger, 30 Curtis Avenue. Um, I just wanted to clarify something that Ms. Clark stated. So regarding the access to the site, you stated that the county prohibits any access from Main Street irregardless of the use, right?
Uh, for this property. Uh, it, it, what-
Yeah, yeah.
So the county-
Meaning even if it wasn't this development, any other development couldn't access from Main Street, right?
That's what they represented to us, is that they would not, uh, be in support of any new curb cuts um, onto Main Street from this property.
Okay. So then irregardless of traffic would be coming to the property from Park Drive North?
Correct, so, meaning that any, any use of the site or future build out of the site would involve traffic being fed through the Park Drive Loop.
Okay. And then based on the, I wasn't here for the first, I mean, I was here the past two, but you said that, you stated today that the traffic engineer stated that based on studies, the mixed-use development here actually reduces the traffic flow from any potential other commercial or similar development.
It reduces a lower intensity of traffic because those, uh, those other uses that are called for in the commercial zoning, um, tend to have higher parking requirements or higher parking ratios and higher trip generation. Meaning, you know, the nature of, say, 7-Eleven or Dunkin' Donuts is that you're going to have more cars coming into a property um, throughout the day than if it's a residential use.
Okay, so that, that would mean that, i- if this building gets built in comparison to another building on site, it actually will be better having this mixed use than like, say, no Dunkin' Donuts coming in this place?
It's a, it's a lower traffic impact is, is what the, um, traffic expert testified to.
Okay, so would reduce traffic going down Park Drive North and similar streets?
Uh, Park Drive North, I think specifically, is what his testimony was to.
Okay, okay. So, okay, so, okay, for the residents of Park Drive North, it seems like this would be a better alternative than any other option.
From a traffic perspective, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
Do you have any other questions, sir?
No, that's all.
Oh, thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Ms. Clark on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Ms. Clark? Please raise your hand and be identified. I don't know if I'm stopped.
I see two more with their hands up. Megan?
Megan, do you see them?
I'm sorry, I received a phone call in the office. Um, I thought it was somebody calling about Zoom, but it wasn't. Uh, yes, I tried to get Weida, but I, I guess she didn't hear me because I was muted. Um, let's, let's do Regina Rooney. And she's muted. Regina, are you there?
Regina, unmute yourself if you hear us.
Okay, we'll try, we'll try Weida again.
Okay, thank you.
We just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Waiton McPherson, 26 Park Drive South. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go right ahead, please.
Okay, we're, uh, Ms. Clark, thank you for your testimony. And I, um, you were talking about the lights on the lit area across Main Street, um, going towards Bethany to help with the Bethany parking lot. Have, it's been about a month now, did the negotiation finalize with Bethany Church for parking?
Um, that would be a question for the attorney. I don't know that the agreement has been formalized, it's probably subject to, you know, approval, um, of the application. Um, but, um, Ben, I don't know if you want to, um, add anything?
But we're going to get Mr. Wine at the end.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait for that, okay.
Thank you.
Well, um, I have lots of questions for that, but I'll just, um, ask my last question, um, for you. Why isn't the building reduced to handle required parking for all your tenants in the building? Instead of going through all that we're going through?
Uh, because we didn't feel that that was a, a better design outcome, meaning that, um, providing prioritizing space for cars over space for people is just not, um, not what contemporary urban design practice calls for, particularly in, in this part of the country where we have higher density populations. Um, and we thought that what we're proposing in terms of parking is appropriate um, and is sufficient for this type of building experience throughout New Jersey and, and the Northeast. Um, the parking ratio as proposed is sufficient for the building. So we didn't want to, uh, you'll see many instances, um, from kind of older, uh, developments where their, um, parking is, is overbuilt, um, and underutilized. Um, and we didn't think that that was, uh, the best outcome for the site. So we, we backed into what are the spaces, number of spaces we need, um, to serve the building in the way that we know, um, the rental market really calls for at this point in time. And we provided that onsite, and then through the concerns raised through the board, um, we took a channel, um, for overflow on an as-needed basis, because we don't think that that need is going to be, uh, significant.
Okay, my other questions will be for Mr. Wine then.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the members of the, of the public have any questions for Ms. Clark on her testimony this evening? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We have a call-in, call-in guest, please, uh, hit star nine. Do you have to unmute yourself? Are you still there?
I'm here, hi.
Okay, great, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Karen, I live on South Park Drive of the Loop. And I just wanted to ask, um, her testimony, I just wanted to ask, how is it a lower, you guys compared the risk of the south part and the north part of the entrance of the Loop and the end of the Loop? How is it the same, how can you compare the risk of when you're entering the Loop versus exiting the Loop?
Uh, well, I think, are you, I think you're, um, speaking to when Mr. Klein had asked about the point of comparison with the townhouses that, um, are on the south side of, or on Park Drive South. Um, and what we were speaking to was the fact that in order to access their lot, they still have to enter Park Drive North and go through the Loop. So the car goes through the same driving pattern regardless of whether it parks on one side of the Loop or the other. Um, so the same traffic trip generation is created for the street. Um, so that's what we're speaking-
Yeah, but when you're entering the Loop, you're accelerating to go up versus when you're exiting, there is a difference.
Right, and based on our estimated trip generation from our traffic report and our traffic study, we don't believe that we're going to have a queuing issue, meaning that we're going to be causing any kind of queuing issue um, with the amount of trip generation we have for pulling in and out of the garage.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Ms. Clark on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing anymore.
Okay.
Oh, wait, we have, uh, Jeannie Shot? Hi, Jeannie. State your name and ask for the record. Maybe she doesn't want to speak.
Okay, try one more. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Ms. Clark? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Here.
There you go.
I-
I hear me now, I'm sorry about that.
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, so Janine Scholz, my name is Janine Scholz. I live on Main Street on the property directly to the south of the new building. I have a question about the, the windows that are in the, um, on the south side of the building. How many bill, how many windows are there? I mean, my, you're proposing that you have a five-foot setback from my property line? And I have windows right there, so I'm going to be five feet from somebody else's window?
Uh, so the windows are, uh, on that portion, let me just pull up the architecture plans real quick so I can get you the correct answer. Um, okay, so the windows, um, there are no windows on the ground floor on that side. The windows are only on the second and third floor, which are stepped back another, um, a little over five feet. So it'll be, it's a little over 10 feet from the property line. I'm not sure how far your windows in particular, or your building is from the property line.
I, I am the property line.
Okay, so the, this would be set back, um, a little over 10 feet um, from your structure, and the windows are on, as I said, the second and third floor. Um, there are, I can count on the facade real quick for you. There are five windows on each floor, um, two of which, um, two of which may be on the stairwell, yes, two of which are to a hallway, so those won't be, um, like, windows where you're going to have, you know, high visibility or, or like, long periods of seeing someone through them. Um, there, I think there are more to allow for light uh, into the building, but the, um, there's three and then one, so there's four windows on each floor, for the second and third floor that face, uh, that property line.
Right, which is my property line, which is my bedroom and my living room and my ba- and my bathroom. And so, which would, you know, impact me opening my windows, opening my shades, having direct, any kind of, um, sunlight out of those windows daily for the, you know, sheer reason of somebody being able to peer into my windows. So it does drastically, if you would agree, impede on my privacy. Being that so-
Mallory, if I can, if I can ask, is the side yard setback requirement not 10 feet?
A side yard setback in the zone is, yes.
10 feet. So we're, and we're compliant where the windows are?
Where the windows are, yes.
Aren't you asking for a variance on that?
We're asking for a variance for the, the bottom floor, which doesn't have windows. And then as I said, the second and third floor step back further.
So then you think that it's appropriate for me to have a, a brick building right outside my window where I've had nothing but a single-family home for years and years and years? My next question, why, instead of making, wh- why does it have to be so big? Why do you need so many variances? Why not make it smaller? Why not make it fit into the scheme of this neighborhood? It's gigantic. Why can't it get smaller? Why is it so big?
As I testified to through the, our series of exhibits, we feel that the building that we're proposing is consistent with this building typology that's called for in the conditional use of the zoning. So, with those, the single-family home zoning is not what's called for on this property. Uh, the zoning has the provision to permit the mixed-use typology, and so we followed the bulk standards that have been consistent with that typology. And so we do feel that for a mixed-use project, we're, we're proposing a, an appropriate structure.
Oh, I would disagree with you there. Okay, that's all my questions for now, thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Ms. Clark on her testimony this evening? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We have Regina Rooney. One last time. Regina, you should be okay now. You are muted. You just have to click unmute. Regina, I'm sorry, we're not hearing you. I'm sending a prompt to unmute.
Okay.
I don't think she knows how to, how to get in.
Yes.
I thought I heard something. Regina Rooney? She's either having a problem unmuting or can't, or can't find the mute.
Right. The, okay, does anybody else have a question for the testimony about Ms. Clark this evening? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any other hands, Brett. Oh, we have Ms. Love Gallard again.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much for allowing me this additional question. You know, there's so much, so much going on, it's very difficult to keep track of your questions and when and where to answer, when and where to ask, so I apologize for misspeaking at times.
Oh, right ahead.
The, um, the testifier right now, has the developer given any estimate? I know that they said that they don't know, or we don't, we don't have the person on the line to tell us how long the construction's going to take. But what is the plan for the traffic flow during construction? Because we know, I don't know if you know, but we just came out about two months of, um, what should call it, Eagle Rock, closing down at nighttime, which is horrible when you're trying to just get right up the street, we got to go so far. So has there been a plan for how? The question, is there a plan to not disrupt the traffic? And if the traffic has to be disrupted during construction time, what's the root of traffic so that we can get in and out? Because we're a one-lane area, everything is one lane around here. What's the plan?
Uh, that's not under the purview of, of my, uh, professional expertise or services for the client, so I can't represent that. Um, Mr. Wine might be able to answer that later. Um, but typically, what I can just tell you from a practice standpoint is that typically, um, when projects pull permits, they're required to provide, um, traffic, uh, traffic, uh, plans and pedestrian plans if they have to ever like close a portion of a sidewalk or something like that for construction purposes. Um, they do have to provide those plans to the town to be reviewed.
Do those plans get turned into the town before this decision is made? Because it sounds like the decision has been made already, and we still have a lot of questions. When is that going to be committed?
They would, um, happen when, when somebody went to pull permits to build a project, so they don't happen as part of the, um, land use approvals.
Okay, so we will make this committee, and I think everybody's trying to just get their questions in, because it's supposed to be like the end. So this particular committee does not have access to what that construction street plan would be at the time that they say yes or no. So they could very likely say yes, and then later on find out it's a whole disaster. Is that what you're saying?
So, so Ms. Gaylor, let me, let me address that real quick, because, because I think there's an easy answer here, hopefully. The, the people that sit on this board, um, would not review that, that's not within their purview. And, and, I mean, I hope I'm not out of line, it's not really their expertise, maybe with the exception of Mr. Klein. Um, but that's why the board has professionals. One of the requirements, if this application is approved, is that we submit for resolution compliance, which means we have to submit all the documents that line up and meet not just all the testimony that we've provided over the course of the hearings, but also all of the comments that are listed in the professional review letters. Furthermore, when permits are submitted for, those require construction drawings, which are significantly more detailed, um, in terms of, you know, specifics of how the actual construction is going to work, electrical plans, plumbing plans, things that go beyond what a, what a land use board reviews. And the, the engineers, the town engineers, as well as the police department, public safety, public works, fire department, again, all review all of those permit submissions to confirm that they are up to snuff.
So basically, the building department is going to oversee this with the zoning official. And if the, uh, traffic is impeded upon, then the, uh, police department would intervene. So that there are other areas of government that will make sure that once we're done, uh, that the project moves smoothly ahead, uh, working with the applicant and their experts.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for stepping into, further explaining that, and I appreciate that. But that project on Eagle Rock, where it would seem that it was smooth because there was a way to go, it was a long inconvenient way to go when you're trying to pick up kids from practice, get home from work. You know, it's, you know, just because you say it's going to be a plan, I'm very leery of the, the functionality of the plan. I know it's a statement, not a question, but it's another question unanswered. Mr. Chairman, that's why we keep asking the same questions, because if you realize it's a lot of questions that have not had answers, and it keeps deferring to different people. And we're very frustrated, and we, and we have the right to be, we do have the right to be.
And you have the right to get the answers, and we're trying to work with you. And the township and the applicant, I'm sure if, if this is approved, will work with you to make sure that-
It's been six months, and the same question's been asked over and over, and you keep telling us, wait till the next person, wait till- I've been on every meeting, and it's been the trend, wait till the next person, then you get to the next person, they bounce back, well, the next person. And it's like confusion for the general public, because this is not our jobs. You know how they say conspiracy theory, keep the general public confused, and then we can do whatever we want. It feels like we're about to be railroaded, I feel railroaded. We moved here to this quaint town to be in a quaint place, not to have these city monstrosities. I, I'm done, thank you, sorry.
No, no, it's okay, I, I'd like to answer your question. We're not, we're not trying to railroad anybody. If you have more questions, we're going to get more answers. At the end of the day, the last person we're going to go back to is Mr. Wine, and you can ask the question again if he so chooses to answer, and hopefully, we'll get the answer you're looking for. How, how things are going to be, uh, in the future, we can't tell you what's going to happen on the street. Uh, if at any-
We know it's gonna happen. We know it. We're playing games. Sorry.
It's okay. It it's okay. We're trying to do the best we can with the information we have in hand, knowing that you have the right to drive through the street and get to the place where you live. The township through its government and the applicant through its um contractors will ensure that there'll always be access. That's that's the key to what we do as as partners, what you, the applicant and town government.
But it's not true. You know it's not. Don't lie to us. And the thing is, what will it do to our pro- property ta- our property uh value in taxes? This building, every new construction adjusts our financial responsibility and or losses. Who's gonna answer that? Who's gonna answer that?
During public comment, you can make.
But that's the question. Who's gonna answer about the way it affects, it will potentially affect our pri- I'm asking a question. Who will answer that question?
I- i- if you let me finish, we're gonna get there. During public comment, you can ask the attorney, who's the representative of the applicant, if they can answer that question, right?
What if they can't? Okay.
Unfortunately, this is not in the purview of the planning board. Okay, so I I wish I had a better answer for you, but that's.
And that's the problem. You guys don't have better answers hardly anywhere.
Okay.
You're saying the same thing every month. I've been here with you, same narrative, no a- less answers, more persuade, more pushing to the next person and telling us not to talk and ask a question every single month, the same circus.
Ma'am, I never said not to talk and I never said it not do not answer the question that you absolutely inappropriate, absolutely inappropriate.
It is inappropriate.
Okay.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go. I'm sorry, I'm gonna go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hang out and make public comments.
Oh, I'm gonna hang out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of the, do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mrs. Clark, Ms. Clark on her testimony this evening? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have uh Love back again. Love Gallagher.
No, no, no. I I didn't raise my hand again. It was an accident. Yeah, sorry, I have to wait. Okay.
That's okay, not a problem. Any of the members of the public have any questions for Ms. Clark on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We have Michaela Bennett. Please state your name and address for the record.
She's gonna automatically pop in, I think, as a panelist, Zoom remembers.
I don't think so. I'm here.
Okay.
Michaela Bennett, thirty-five Old Indian Road. Uh, Ms. Clark, you're a professional planner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I was not paying attention when you were introduced, but I've listened now to all the questions and I would like to ask you some as well. Um, what's the, what is the public benefit? Um, if any, to um to um having this building be built.
Um, so I think I spoke of a few items. Um, primarily, we will be um implementing a crosswalk across Main Street um with additional pedestrian safety measures. And I think that that's a substantial improvement for the neighborhood and general pedestrian safety in the area. Um, we also have a stormwater detention system proposed underneath our garage slab. And what that does is in um high intensity rain events, um where you'll often see flooding, particularly, you know, in this area and on this site where you have a substantial grade change uh because of the hill. Um, that that stormwater will be directed into our tank instead of running into the this larger system within the street. Um, when that system is getting over inundated a- and tends to fail. Um, and then it gets slowly released over a longer period of time. Um, so it helps basically uh ameliorate the im- the impacts of the um stormwater generation that would happen on our site from overburdening the system at a time where it's already overburdened um from the heavy rainfall. Additionally, um we'll have additional improvements from a stormwater management standpoint onsite with the uh addition of the green roof that we're proposing. I think those are all um uh benefits that, as I stated, go beyond uh just benefiting our property specifically and benefit the neighborhood as a whole.
Okay, um, so I wanna make sure I understand. It's crosswalk, it's stormwater retention, and it's green roof. Okay, um focusing on.
In addition, in addition to a new um commercial space, I do think that, you know, which is called for in the um conditional use zoning, I think the new um commercial space and the improved sidewalk environment at the corner of um Main Street and Park Drive North, that will happen with that commercial street, but this will be widening the sidewalk there um for the entrance to that commercial space. I think that that's an added benefit as well.
Okay, thank you. So um, um, starting with the s- the retention, the stormwater retention. Um, would the lot coverage? It is the stormwater retention a requir- a requirement as a result of the lot coverage or is it uh just the public benefit?
It's a public benefit.
It isn't required?
The detention, the detention system's not required.
It's not required. Okay.
You're required to do certain levels of uh, you know, onsite stormwater management that's required for any development project. The um stormwater detention system goes beyond that.
If this is in your area of expertise, it or if it isn't, feel free to let me know. Um with the build, would a building of this size cause excess water runoff?
I can't um represent that in testimony. That'll be uh an appropriate question for the engineer.
Okay, so as a planner, uh the building coverage versus the the grass that would have been there, um you don't, you can't render an opinion, a professional opinion as to which would be better by way of water runoff.
Maybe I didn't understand your first question. Were you asking? Uh, were you asking? You were saying something about the size of a building and I were speaking to grass. So maybe I misunderstood your initial question if you wouldn't mind.
I think I was talking about lot coverage and sorry to interrupt. So uh the the proposed building's lot coverage versus having more grass available to deal with water runoff from say melting snow or from rain is it if if you're able to opine, is is one better than the other?
Um, I can't definitively say that. Again, these are like, these are um analyses that are completed by the civil engineer. Um, you know, we can all logically, I think, understand that um lawn or grass or plant material of any kind absorbs water, things like asphalt and structures do not. Um, but I haven't done any kind of analysis comparing, nor is it my, you know, professional area of expertise to do the analysis that would compare one to the other, because I don't know. I don't have the alternative of, you know, we can say definitively like grass absorbs water. Um, impervious materials do not, they cause runoff. I can't say based on what we're, what we're um proposing in terms of the capacity of the stormwater detention tank, if that's like over or under what would happen with uh if we had, I think what you're asking is if we had a compliant lot coverage.
Understood, understood. Okay, so my next question for you um is regarding the questions that you've heard tonight about um neighbors and their windows and um what their windows would look out on at this point. In your opinion, um, is there a way to mitigate that detriment to the um community and and the public and the neighbors and and I mean, there's a reason why um notice is required of specific neighbors. And so um my concern is for the immediate neighbors and I'm um, I'm wondering if you have an opinion as to how um the applicant could mitigate in order to improve the quality of life um concerns of the neighbors based on the size and proximity of the building to their windows.
So I do think. I'll certainly let Ms. Clark answer. I just wanna put out there, I I think she there definitely has been testimony on this. I'm certainly happy for her to answer. Um, I'm just, you know, to try and avoid some duplicitousness. I'm I'm just, you know, I just wanna put that out there.
I didn't hear, uh, uh, fair, Mr. Wine, I didn't hear um I didn't hear Ms. Clark um determine whether that detriment, you know, is outweighed by the benefits. Um, and I didn't hear if she thinks that the applicant could mitigate in order to um improve the experience of the immediate neighbors.
Sure, and I don't know if you were here last month, but that there was, she had much more extensive testimony last month. But again, certainly, Ms. Clark, to the extent you can answer this question, I I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, I just wanna um clarify for you, Ms. Bennett, that um our landscape architect or our um engineer testified to the details of the landscaping. So we do have landscape screening proposed on that property line, um that I think you're speaking to the um pri- prior um questioner who uh lived uh on the property line adjacent to us from the side yard and asked about the number of windows. Um, and so there is substantial landscape screening and that's a a very um typical, you know, uh first approach at mitigating um these kinds of variances where you have maybe side yard uh or rear yard variances, um and you're a little bit closer to the property line than the zoning envisions. Again, I just wanna uh reiterate that the windows are a compliant distance from the property line. So from what the zoning contemplates, there's not mitigation to be made for the purposes of the windows, but in terms of just the the uh structure itself, uh we do have landscape screening um proposed along that property line.
Am I understanding um your answer correctly that there's no need to mitigate because the window, the distance of the windows from the property line is compliant? Is that?
I'm saying, there's no, there, in terms of um what you were asking to earlier is mitigating the impacts of a variance. And what I'm saying is the windows are not the portion of the structure that necessitates the variance. The portion of the structure that necessitates the variance on that property line does not, is the ground floor, which does not have windows. And we have provided substantial landscape screening um that will grow taller than that ground floor to visually buffer that portion of the building.
So my question was mitigation for the neighbor, not for the building or the variance, but.
Well, the landscapes, the landscaping would mitigate for the the neighbor would be looking at the landscaping as opposed to seeing an obstructed view of the building.
So the landscaping um.
It's on that property line, so that would be visible to that.
And that's what would be visible, not a brick wall.
Right, there might be of of course, like seasonal implications there or, you know, portions of of the planting in which they would see the some portion of the brick wall, but as opposed to just looking at a blank um brick wall, there will be substantial landscaping that is um planted and and specked to grow taller than that first story um for that portion.
Okay, and it's your opinion that um that's sufficiently mitigated for the.
Yeah, and that's a very um standard practice for, like I said, these kinds of variances is, you you know, you do try to soften the impact of um that encroachment into the yard by um landscaping. A lot of times people use fencing. Um, I have a personal preference towards landscaping, but that's subjective. Um, so yes, we have that and that I would say that's a a typical um best practices.
And I just have one last question, Chairman. Uh, thank you for um permitting me extra time. So the question is um regarding the lack of parking. Um, is there anything that the applicant can do to mitigate? Um, it's a very congested area. Parking is a problem.
Bennett, that's been asked and answered. I'm sorry, we're gonna have to move on.
They've, someone has asked Ms. Clark.
Ms. Bennett has been asked and answered over three meetings by the part, in fact, she's not the parking expert. We have had a traffic engineer, we've had parking experts. I'm sorry, we're gonna have to move on. That's been asked and answered many times.
Chairman, I'd just like to point out that if a member of the public has not.
Ma'am, you, ma'am, you could have, you can listen to any one of the meetings previously. This, this is. That's not fair to the applicant.
That is not my obligation as a member of the public and I'm entitled.
Our obligation to make sure that the applicant also has a fair hearing. We can't keep asking the same question over and over again. Is, that's unfair to the applicant.
That you interrupt women all the time. All the time. You let men ask repetitive questions all the time. But when a woman is asking a question, you interrupt all the time and it's offensive. Thank you.
Ms. Bennett, I only interrupt you because you're not following the rules. Thank you very much.
No rule. There is no rule about repetitive questions. There is no rule.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Do any other members of the public have any questions for the app, for the Ms. Clark on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We have a couple of uh people that have asked questions previously. Do you wanna allow them?
If they can ask different questions that have not been asked already, absolutely.
Okay, Janine, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Janine Scholes, uh Main Street, West Orange. Um, I was just, I just had a question about, you said that the um commercial building would be beneficial. How is it beneficial if you don't know what's going in there?
I think uh as an urban designer and a professional planner, that um activated spaces on ground floors on Main Streets activated meaning active programming as opposed to, say, a property that has um just parking along Main Street or like an enclosed parking garage. Um, an activated use is something that um generates, you know, pedestrian activity and makes the street a more vibrant um experience to walk down or or more vibrant neighborhood to live in. Um, so commercial spaces tend to inherently um foster that and knowing the permitted uses for the commercial uses that would go in a space of this size, I do believe that it will um, it will improve the um overall pedestrian environment in the neighborhood.
Are you aware that it's not really a walking town?
That's, I think that's an opinion I can't.
It's not Jersey City. It's West Orange. It's not a walking town. I, I'm just, I don't know if you're aware. Also, when you start construction on this building, because you were so close to my foundation, how how is that going to affect my foundation? Will I now have leaks in my, in my basement, which I've never, ever, ever had before? Will I have cracks in my foundation, which I've never had before? What what is my safeguard as far as my foundation during your construction? Cause you're going way down deep to build a um parking garage.
Uh, I'm, again, I'm not a construction management expert, so I don't think it's appropriate for me to answer that question. Ben, I don't know if you wanna answer any aspect of that.
Yeah, everything has to be done with the appropriate permits and oversight and uh and it will be just like any other development and any development uh on any property.
That doesn't answer my question.
Proper permits will be pulled and the site will be, construction will be overseen by professionals to ensure that there's no damage to adjacent properties.
And if there is damage to adjacent properties?
There's, then there's insurance in play to uh to make sure that that's taken care of. We have an obligation as a property owner during construction, during operation, just like any other property owner at any point uh in their ownership has an obligation not to damage other people's properties.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, we're gonna do now for the moment, we're gonna take a uh five minute uh bio break.
Thank you.
Chairman, that's Chair- Chairman, are you still there?
Yes, yes, sir.
Can I just ask, are we, can we just at least finish closing the public to Ms. Clark if that's all right?
I I don't know how many more questions the public is gonna, okay.
We have one more.
I think it's more. They missed Gaylord, who's asked questions, but I don't see anybody else.
Last question.
Okay, Ms. Gallagher.
Thank you so much. And uh, I I apologize for coming back again, but remember, as a layperson, sometimes what you say is hard to visualize. So sometimes I, other people ask questions like, oh, that's what they're talking about. So I can never understand or visualize the uh foliage and that, you call it foliage, what'd you call it, about the bushes or whatever? What, what's the term used?
Greening?
Landscaping?
The landscaping, right? Let me tell you, you're gonna put landscaping between the properties. I don't know if you've given um any thought, you're a developer or when you're planning about the additional insects. West Orange, we're near the woods. One time I put some um a taller, something in between my property and the other. My landscaper was um stung by a bee because it brought a lot of insects. When you put uh landscaping like that in a smaller space where people, you know, with, you know, not people have to go through your windows and things, there's gonna be a lot more insects and rodents and not just not rats, but you know, we got a lot of animals. So have you all considered the animals and the insects that would be drawn to this area that you, that you're building?
Uh, so what I can just.
That was my only question.
Yeah, what I can just offer is that um, you know, the civil engineers and the architects and the landscape architects that work on these projects have, you know, professional expertise in in terms of um plant material selection. So they know um based on a certain location or a certain region, how to cite the correct plants. They also know like yearly trends, meaning that um like certain pests go through phases where uh certain plants become more susceptible over a period of time to certain pests. And so those get cycled out at the planting um strategy and and substituted with alternative um species of of similar plants that don't, that aren't prone to those pests. So these are all considerations that are taken in um when we plant things. It's not, you know, it's not uh the same as a, say, a private homeowner who might just go to a garden center and pick things based on the advice. Things based on the advice of an employee or something that they just like the way it looks aesthetically, these are. Um licensed professionals with with high expertise in terms of the plant selection on these kinds of projects. Um and so there there's a lot of thought that goes into the planting plans.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, before we take a break, Mr. Wine, we're gonna take a break from you. And PB twenty four, there's thirteen IMMC Health. Um as the hour grows late uh for the applicant, would you consider? Having this uh at another meeting? Having your application heard at another meeting. At the January meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Derek Orth, on behalf of the applicant that you just referenced.
Yes.
Good to see you, good to see everyone here tonight, um. My client is very interested in uh pursuing a resolution to the application this evening. Um I'm not sure.
And hang out? We'll see, we'll see how far we get.
Yes, sir. I think that's the best that I can do, I I.
Great, we're gonna take a five minute break, it's nine forty four, nine forty.
Chairman, real quick, before we break, I just want to let you know, this is Pete Smiraldo, I apologize for being late, I did log in about eight twenty yourself, but I didn't want to interrupt the members of the public. I just want to put that on the record, I've been sitting here listening.
Thank you, Yamlet, please note that for the record, eight twenty eight, Mr. Smiraldo joined the board, thank you. Five minute bio break, we'll be back here expeditiously.
I think we are all doing a great job exclamation point. I think we are all doing a great job.
Hi. So should I. So we gotta, we gotta carry thirty one thirty five W O L L.
Yeah, you're out, you're not muted.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
You know, I'm muted, Mr. Sir.
Okay, back on the record. Okay, Mr. Dusenberry. Hello. Okay. We're going to have. Okay. Okie dokie. Mr. Dusenberry.
A little slow on this one, but I got there.
Okay, hello there, PB twenty four, there's fifteen thirty one thirty five W O L L C, um. Would you like to be carried to the next regular meeting?
Hold on, I'm just checking my text messages with my client.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, okay, uh Mr. Chairman, we thank you for offering us the opportunity, we have listened to. Uh in with great interest this evening, but uh. Looking at the number of attendees and anticipating a lot of statements from the public, I think that that your offer is probably best to be accepted.
Okay, um Ms. McGovern, when can we put Mr. Dusenberry twenty four dash fifteen thirty one thirty five W O L L C uh? January meeting? And there will be uh no additional um requirement. Or notice to be given.
On that point, Mr. Chairman, we did um find for jurisdictional facts at your last meeting, so uh. Uh those carried to tonight and obviously will carry on to the next meeting, do you have a date certain for us?
Uh we're gonna, I'm asking Ms. McGovern, she'll let us know.
I'm sorry, I will.
Okay, no problem. January eighth?
That would be, that would be fine with us.
Is that the date? What, Ms. McGovern? She's gonna let us know in a minute.
Mr. Chairman, it's uh Derek Orth for IMMC.
Yes.
Uh I'm waiting to get a final confirmation from my client, but I fully expect that we will be requesting to be carried. Just like um Mr. Dusenberry.
Okay, so let us know when you speak to your client, Ms. McGovern. We can't hear you.
You're muted.
You're on mute.
I couldn't hear, I I forgot I put my earphones in, what was uh? I was like, oh, we're not started yet.
Mr. Dusenberry and his applicant, we're gonna carry them. Uh the no no additional notice will be required, and what meeting can we get them on? The first January meeting?
January eighth.
Okay, is that good, Mr. Dusenberry?
That's fine, Mr. Chairman, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday and a happy new year.
Happy and a healthy holiday, happy new year, thank you so much, we'll see you in Jan, we'll see you in twenty twenty five.
Thank you very much.
And we're waiting to hear. From Dr. Crock.
That that's my client, uh Mr. Chairman, if just um.
I think we should just carry it to the January eighth and if that's a problem, um we can carry it again.
I I I I agree, it should be carried, uh Ms. McGovern. Uh what I would like to do, uh Mr. Chairman, I'm so sorry to be uh upping the proceedings. I would just like to speak to Mr. Crock, I had been on the phone with him previously.
Go ahead, no problem.
If I may, um just within the next two minutes. Um confirm that with my client and then uh kind of raise my hand.
Yes.
Yes, well, that's fine by me.
Okay, great, okay. Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm gonna mute myself, Mr. Chairman, and then when you see me raise my hand, I apologize for interrupting Mr. Mr. Wine's presentation, but. You know what the purpose that will be.
I will give Mr. Orth all the, all the respect. Professional courtesy.
Hey, thank you, sir.
All this courtesy, I'm I'm getting a hot flash.
Um I I'm gonna go on mute and um.
Okay.
You're gonna hear from me in about thirty seconds.
Thank you, okay, so at this time, we're gonna, we're gonna close this portion of the meeting, we're gonna go to public comment. So any members of the public that have a comment, we're going to limit you to three minutes. At the end of three minutes, there's gonna be a clock going, I'm gonna ask you to please stop talking. Because we're gonna have to turn you off for three minutes, so all members of the public will have their time to have their say. So at this time, uh first person to have public comment, please raise your hand, be identified. And uh Ms. Bro, please put up the clock, I'm gonna give you three minutes.
Okay, yes, I will. Um getting that set. Okay, we have uh Susan Leschek. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh I I was under the impression we were able to ask questions of the mayor before we were able to do public comment because they were.
Uh I I'm sorry, we we've had, we had a discussion. And the answer is that the mayor is not the one giving parking permits, this comes from the police department. So that's gonna be a a discussion between the police department and the town council, um not the planning board or the mayor at this time.
Okay, uh Susan Lenchik, two thirty four Egorak Avenue, formerly Park Drive Loop. Until the parking permit and other parking issues are resolved, it must be assumed that parking will still be a concern. And so I ask you, did you ever have a hostage patient at home and a much needed home health aide? Who said that she would not continue the job if she could not park her car? I did. Did you ever lose pay on your job because you had to leave work early when a snowstorm was coming? So that you could secure a parking space in the street near your home? I did. These are real situations for us. Ultimately, the town council and planning and zoning boards exist to serve the citizens. Whether it be legislation or consideration of variances, the focus should be on the community and the common good. If the variances for this proposed development are approved. The impacts on the neighborhood will be severe regarding safety, parking and quality of life. No one in the neighborhood would benefit. The safety of the residents and visitors in the neighborhood is paramount. The proposed setbacks do not respect the residence of adjacent properties. Parking issues are already a daily and nightly stress. The traffic engineer had conducted no traffic study. Was unaware of the parking rules on the Park Drive Loop and vicinity. Did not research the number of vehicles owned by the residents of the loop. Did not study how many homes and apartment buildings have no off-street parking. Was this due diligence? Rather, he presented theoretical numbers for theoretical people, vehicles and trips and theoretical neighborhoods. He said there would be four to six vehicle trips per peak hour. In my own complex, I counted twelve for twelve units. Your decision has to be based on actual conditions, not theoretical ones. The engineer said that because he and his wife shared one vehicle fifty one years ago. That is what today's couples do, that is not today's reality. We don't object to the property being developed, what is needed is a development that respects the community and is properly scaled. That scale must be evaluated, not based on Main Street, but on the Park Drive Loop. Months ago, I spoke to an out-of-state attorney who represents developers. He used to represent citizens. He told me that we must hire an attorney and expert witnesses to represent us. He implied that our voices would not otherwise be heard. We did not have the resources for that. I want to believe that he is wrong, so please prove him wrong. Respect the community of the Park Drive Loop and the surrounding area. Which will suffer adverse impacts from this development with its variances. We know our neighborhood better than you do because we live the reality there every day. We implore you, vote no on the variances, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Orth, you have your hand raised, sir.
Yes, I I I'm so sorry to interrupt the public comment, Ms. Ms. Lenchik, um thank you for that, uh Mr. Wine, I apologize for that as well. Uh Mr. Chairman, I I just respectfully request on behalf of. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I just respectfully request on behalf of IMMC that the application be carried to the board's regular meeting in January without further need for public notice at the board's regular meeting scheduled on.
January eighth.
January eighth. Seven thirty P M, virtually.
Via Zoom. Uh, PB twenty-four dash thirteen IMMC Health, nine ninety-three Pleasant Valley Way will be carried to the January eighth, seven thirty P M meeting via Zoom, and there will no, uh, no additional notice be required.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the public.
Thank you. Happy and a healthy new year.
Good health and new year. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Uh, okay. Do any of the members of the public have any comment? Please raise your hand and be identified. You have three minutes.
Yes, we have Joe Middleton. State your name and address to the record.
Yes, uh, my name is Joe Middleton, and I live on four Ashwood Terrace. All right, so uh, I'm stating, my name is Joe Middleton, and I reside at four Ashwood Terrace. I've attended several meetings regarding the proposed project for ten Main Street. And I am increasingly concerned that some of the committee members may be inclined to approve these variances without sufficient scrutiny or concern for how the development will affect the residents in the immediate area. Another concern is that the dimensions of four ten Main Street narrowly avoid the threshold that would have had this property reviewed by the zoning board instead of this committee, where I think it would have likely have been denied. As a homeowner paying over eleven thousand dollars in eleven, in property taxes, I expect a certain quality of life that justifies such an investment. Living on Ashwood Terrace is already, I already contend with the lack of parking and available spaces and vehicles speeding up and down my street to avoid the light at Harrison Main Street. Many of these single-family homes in the area have also been converted to multifamily residences, significantly increasing the number of vehicles per household. The lack of designated parking at four ten Main Street will only exacerbate an existing parking shortage. Parking is already a challenge on my street with residents from neighboring streets often parking on Ashwood Terrace. A resident from the building on Park North and Main Street frequently parks on Ashwood Terrace, at least one. On multiple occasions, I've noticed car, his car parked on this block and in, and sometimes directly in front of my house. I noticed this because he has the same make and model as my own. If I return home after eight P M on, quite often on days, I find an unfamiliar car parked in front of my house, forcing me to have to park sometimes a block away. The parking situation only worsens in the summer when I also contend with the overflow from the community pool, which is on the other side of my backyard. They're suggesting additional parking for four ten Main Street at Bethany Church is impractical. What does as needed mean? It is unreasonable to expect four ten Main Street renters to notify management that they would have an extra vehicle and possibly be subjected to an additional charge when they can freely occupy the first spot they come across on a neighboring street. There is no way that you can enforce that arrangement. In short, I think the developer fails to acknowledge the lack of public transportation serving this immediate area. Develop, the developer is underestimating the number of cars each household will own. And if you consider the social and economic demographic, other people can afford to live at that property, the likelihood only increases. Overall, there is a lack of consideration on how the lack of the assigned parking will affect the al- already overcrowded parking situation. In addition to the parking situation, the building's commercial space is small. Nine hundred square feet. I am underwhelmed at a nine hundred square foot commercial space a- and how they're using this to justify the variance. Include, in closing, improving these variances will unfairly burden the community and negatively impact my quality of life. The developer is not concerned with the community or how the property will impact its residents. I urge the committee members to consider the residents' concerns and vote against the proposed variances for ten Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do any of the members of the public have any comments for the planning board? Please raise your hand and be identified, and you have three minutes.
Yes, we have Quincy's iPad.
Thank you.
Hi, Quincy, five Park Drive North. So I'm not, there's I don't have a prepared statement. I'm not as eloquent as some of the other statements, but uh I just think that uh pretty much everybody in the neighborhood agrees that this project, especially with the variances, is just going to be a detriment to our neighborhood, and it's not going to improve the quality of li- our quality of life or the um or our property values in any way, shape or form. And um, you know, we all love this neighborhood, but um, we're all, uh, we've, all of us, I think, have been frustrated um, by the parking situation in the neighborhood um at one time or another, and um, it's only gonna get worse with this project. And um I just uh you know, hope that, I don't, I mean, the only reason that I see for built, putting twelve apartments there uh, and tw- you know, with only twelve or thirteen parking spaces, whatever, is because the, obviously, the landlord is gonna make a lot more money with a lot more apartments, but it doesn't benefit us in any way, so um, I'm just gonna say, I hope you vote against it. None of us want it. Um, it's gonna be really bad for me because I live very close to the building. Today, when I uh, came home, there was a school bus and a FedEx truck at the mouth of uh Park Drive North. I had to wait for that whole mess to be cleared up, and that, that's not unusual. And with that parking garage there, it's just gonna be even worse. Everybody's gonna be backing up on a main street. And I, I just find it hard to believe that any legitimate traffic study uh couldn't see that, that this is gonna be a huge issue. So um, that's all I'm saying. I'm against it, and I hope you vote against it, too.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any public comment? For the planning board to hear, please ra- please raise your hand, be identified. You have three minutes.
Yes, we have uh Love Gallard. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you again. My name is Love Gallard. I'm at thirty-one Park Drive North. I wanna say I've, I've been here eight years. I bought a home here because of the quaintness of the neighborhood and because it's like a secret hideaway back here that we get to enjoy because we chose to live here. So here are my, my statements uh in a list, some narrative. I'm concerned about, there, there are many things that have not been answered, and we ran out of time or it's not the place. We have to consider what would happen to our property values, what would happen to our property taxes. How does it benefit, how does this property in particular benefit West Orange overall? There's, there's no benefit. I don't think there is. At least no one told us there's any benefit to West Orange unless there might be any back deals or any friends with these developers with some people within West Orange because this property makes no sense. Um, from what I heard, many of the people who were, who testified and the woman who testified tonight, it appeared as though they openly lied or used deceptive language with not, with um, non-everyday language speaking to us, the public. Because I am a person who has to speak to the public from a high um technical standpoint, and we are trained that we must use everyday language. And what I understand is everyday language, fifth to seventh grade level, so that everyone has a fair opportunity to understand. So a lot of the, the um narrative of the testifiers, the, the witnesses, they use language that was way over most people's heads, which made us, made it difficult to a- ask questions that could be answered properly, and we got cut off, and there was a lot of back and forth, it was a whole circus because I believe largely the language was way too high. All right, other things, I have a hook, uh, let me get through it. I got uh, one minute. The um, there's open documentation, even with the county saying that there's a safety concern in that area because we got all these public wonderful things going on. We got the senior citizens, we got the children's buses, we got the regular bus stop, we got the gas station. We already have the crosswalk down here for the elementary school that I personally advocated for before my fo- my daughter got to the school, makes us very happy. And so now we at, at increased traffic where we were trying to protect our children with their first crosswalk. Um, most of these um have been about um the completed construction. We've had no testimony, not even a guesstimate about how long it will take, how the traffic will be rerouted, how will it affect us going up the hill? We got wintertime coming. It's all type of things that have been unanswered um that are important to us as a community. There's an allowance of the, this allowances of the variances are unnecessary and do not benefit the local residences, residences at all. I'm sure we'd welcome a new, smaller design. It could have its own parking lot, and everyone can fit, and everyone can be happy. This um could align with the landscape of what we already have here. We are in the Edison Park community where the new constructions look somewhat like Edison Park. We are adjacent to a national park. The mayor, Susan McCarthy herself, used to give tours in, in telling us how strongly she feels about the quaintness of our town, the history of our town, the landscape of our town. And to approve this would be disrespectful to how everyone feels. This is an old town with old families, and we hold true to the beauty of the town and the historic markets that we have all around town. So in closing, this would be a grave inter- interruption to our quality of life as we have invested in West Orange by purchasing homes and paying taxes. So vote no to this variance. It is dis- it's a disrespectful application altogether. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, any other members of the community that would like to make a comment, raise your hand and be identified. You have three minutes.
Yes, we have MK eight. Please state your name and address for the record.
MK Adams, Park Drive South. One hundred and seventy residents signed a petition opposing this application, not for petty reasons. We're concerned about our safety and well-being. Most of the board members who visited the site with us understood our concerns right away. The setback variances create several hazards, especially on Park Drive North. A setback of five feet there, as noted by the zoning official during the sprab meeting, is a dangerous situation. It creates a blind corner on Main and forces cars to wait on the street for the garage door to open. The driveway's proximity to Main Street off a steep grade poses several hazards. Collisions at this corner will increase an adverse consequence. With a twenty-five-foot setback, Carl's cars could pull off the road and wait on a driveway. That also eliminates the need for the intrusive pedestrian alarm, an obvious adverse consequence. I'm grateful Mr. Hazel spoke about traffic intensity in different zones. Residents of the Loop should not need to bear significantly more traffic on roads that are not zoned as B two. That's an adverse consequence. Now, Howard Malz's numbers must be challenged. Statistics from the U S Census Bureau and ACS in twenty twenty-two, in West Orange, ninety-eight percent of households own a car. Seventy-nine percent own two or more. Getting to work, fifty-four percent of residents drive alone. Fifteen percent use public transit. The North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, West Orange households average four vehicle trips per day. Twelve units could generate forty-eight additional trips per day around the Loop, not just seven or eight during peak hours. Most units will absolutely have more than one car. The parking variance will cause an indefensible adverse consequence. The pitch that tenants of four ten will willingly park six hundred feet away in an unmonitored, unsecured municipal lot is incredulous. Even the mayor noted that. There's no assurance that Bethany Church will provide the additional parking, and why should they? The resident parking permit system that's been floated as a condition while encouraging is not an easy fix, and there's no assurance it will be implemented. It would be a dereliction of the board's duty to grant any of these variances without a comprehensive traffic study, including public transit use and a parking study with an accurate parking inventory. The survey submitted by the applicant's traffic expert is grossly insufficient. The serious traffic hazards on Main Street must be controlled and made safer before any large building is constructed here. This building is not in the public's interest. There's no affordable housing. It poses multiple adverse consequences. No variances should be granted when only the owner benefits. This building would be a substantial detriment to our well-being. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public have any public comments? Please raise your hand and be identified. You have three minutes.
Yes, we have Barbara Torriello.
Yes, it's Barbara Torriello, um, three Park Drive North. I'm a seventy-five-year resident of the Loop. Um. I just, I have a few words. I don't have statistics. I'm just listening tonight for, as I did all the other meetings. Uh. The nightmare on Park Drive continues. Uh, parking, parking and more parking. I feel that, that, that um from the insufficient traffic and park, parking and safety studies to the way the public was continually shut down for trying to plead our concerns and coming to the conclusion that my late husband, who passed away a month ago, was right when he said, don't waste your breath. Uh, this project is, is too big. It's too unsafe. And it does nothing at all to make our neighborhood better. Please vote no on these variances. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public have any comment? Please raise your hand, be identified. You have three minutes.
Yes, we have, I'm sorry, I forget your first name again, Park Drive South.
Okay.
There you go.
Hi. Sandra Thorney, Park Drive South. All right. To begin, I want to say that this building looks nothing like any other in the current neighborhood. And the request for the bulk variances and setbacks of the building allows for a limited privacy of our neighboring residents, including my own. This building basically interferes with the neighborhood pattern. It does not fit the layout of this neighborhood. And despite what has been proposed with all the additions and changes made according to the opening statement made by the lawyer, it still does not make anything better in the neighborhood. In my opinion, this will interfere with the quality of life of existing families in and around the neighborhood. There are a lot of concerns that have been raised regarding parking spaces on the street. This building offers less than required for each household. There is likely to be a hardship among existing residents in the area who already struggle with parking and do not have a driveway. I heard the traffic engineer and Mr. Wine talk about additional parking space for the building, and it's still not feasible for uh the families expected to live there. Several questions have been raised and asked and are unanswered for this project. There was no parking study, traffic study or proper solutions by the lawyer. Yeah. Um. Sorry. Um, Mr. Sugar and his team offer to purchase additional parking space, which seems to be a flimsy promise uh that will not be enforced by him or the county, meaning there will be no accountability for Mr. Sugar or the occupants when they move in. Additionally, the building does not seem to have a a percentage of units for low-income families, uh, so, which suggests that there's no benefit really to the neighborhood. Um. So I just wanna say that, you know, members of the board, think about this, you know, place yourself in any of the housing around this neighborhood and and any of the, the houses in the neighborhood and put this building there and just think about whether the concerns that have been raised by all the the residents of this neighborhood. Would you wanna live here with that building placed in this neighborhood? Please vote no, variances. Okay.
Thank you very much. Do any of the members of the community have any public comment? Please raise your hand and be identified. You have three minutes.
Yes, we have. Call in user number one. You should be seeing a prompt to unmute. And hit star nine. Can you see it? You're muted. You should be able to hit star nine. I'm sorry. Can you try again? Okay, we'll come back to you. We have Weeda McPherson.
Yes, my name is Waiton McPherson. I live at twenty-six Park Drive South. I've lived here for thirty-two years. And my points are about the. And my points are about the safety in this neighborhood, Main Street, Park Drive, North, Southwest, speeding and parking. I understand that there are parking concerns all over our town. But I agree with MK. Mr. Maltz did not, and I stress, did not conduct a thorough traffic survey study nor a parking inventory. On Main Street in front of Edison School, there are vehicles parked alongside the bend, which is across the street from the auto body shop. This makes the sightlines vulnerable. This makes visibility at this point very difficult. This is one reason why cars blow through the pedestrian rapid flash and begin crosswalk. No one drives the stretch at twenty-five miles per hour. Project Vision Zero identifies it as a high injury network. Trying to cross Main Street by pressing the button, you wait an average of four to five cars before vehicles will stop. From the flashing light, there is now a school bus stop on the corner of Park Drive South and Main. I believe this was moved to this point for the twenty twenty-four fall school year. School buses make it impossible to see cars coming from left to pull out of the street up onto Main Street. The proposed building is two hundred feet from Degman House, the senior citizen building, and two hundred feet from Edison School. This stretch is vulnerable to kids from the Loop and the seniors from the Degman House, and just seniors, period. Last month, a senior, for an example, the last month, the senior was hit between the stretch. The stretch on Main Street between Park Drive North and South was suggested that they will move the transit bus stop from the center of two corners closer to Park Drive North to accommodate added spaces between the streets. But they are not accounting for the parking rule. No cars can not park twenty feet of an intersection. So there will be no parking spaces if they shift. But now, speaking about a crosswalk, I guess we can eliminate that. I don't know. We can't ask any questions. So currently, we have school buses and transit bus stops. There are no signs near Park Drive South stating the corner parking rule. Therefore, drivers pull out of Park Drive South do not have the visibility to pull out onto Main Street. Parking on one side of the Loop is hazardous as it is. I reiterate that having parking permits in Quigley parking lot and Bethany is a joke. Tenants of the proposed building will not walk two blocks for their car, especially in inclement weather. We now, we know it's public parking, but it's unfair to the residents that don't have driveways. Currently, they have hard times finding parking on the Loop. Vote no for the variance. The design of the building will endanger our children, seniors, property, and motorists. This building will cause a substantial detriment to this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public have any public comments?
Mr. Chair, before we move to the next public commenter.
Council President, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. Is this the time for them to ask the questions that were, that were unanswered?
We'll ask Mr. Wine if he, well, we'll get, let's finish public comment first.
Okay.
Do any other members of the public have any comment about the application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We're gonna, there's a few people that are asking questions that have already spoken, so I'm going to go over, pass over them, and if there's time, we'll get them. A Priestley, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. A Priestley, Park Drive North. I want to thank everyone who's come, who's come out, spoken in opposition. I'm a relatively new resident, and I would like to reiterate Ms. Weetha's points. Just recently, there was an accident that occurred in which one of the seniors were injured almost on the corner where the proposed building will take place. The, there are cars that come regularly speeding up and down the street. And that won't be in any way ameliorated. It will only be exacerbated by this structure, in particular, the positioning of the driveway and the sheer number of vehicles that are being proposed. I would ask that everyone vote no and, and really think long and hard as to who the true beneficiary of these variances would be. Because if you have a number of residents in the immediate area who would be impacted, clearly stating that we would be adversely affected, the question should be at the top, at the top of your mind, who truly benefits from this variance? If it's a single individual, i.e. a, a land, landholder or lease owner, it, it doesn't seem as though the balance should weigh in their favor versus the rest of the people in the area. That's all I have, and I thank everyone. And again, I hope you vote no.
Thank you very much, sir. Do any other members of the public have any comment? Please raise your hand and be identified. You have three minutes.
Okay, we have Janine Schott. State your name and address for the record. Oh, wait. She, there she is.
You got me?
Yep, now we do.
Okay. Okay, you have me? Okay. Good evening, everybody. My property will be and is directly affected, not only by the proposed building, but also the variances sought by Mr. Sugar. As a, as a resident directly next to the four-ten property, I have concerns with the sheer size of the building. If the variances are granted, instead of the ten-foot minimum setback from my property line, it will be cut nearly in half to five-point-three-three feet. That seems to me to be encroaching on my personal space far too much. It will directly disturb my light, airflow, and view. I've been listening to all the back and forth between all the parties involved over the past several months. I don't believe the majority of you have seen the site and the Park Drive Loop itself. I wish all of you would take into considerations the families impacted by this building. I wish you could put yourselves in our position. It's not that we're opposed to having a structure there. Of course, Mr. Sugar has the right to build his, on his property. However, he does not need to be granted any variances for his new building. The building will be adding several more residents as well as cars to the neighborhood. The Loop already struggles with parking, and despite the unofficial traffic survey done, we, the, I'm sorry. What was reported is not indicative of the traffic we deal with daily, not only by the residents of the Loop, but the people who use the Loop as a U-turn from Main Street back to Main Street. I wish I had the time to discuss all the issues I have with this construct, such as possible gas interrupt, interruption, moving the gas line, possible electricity interruption, the noise of the trucks and people constructing the building, the inconveniences of equipment on the site, the traffic backed up onto Main, onto our main thoroughfare, the residents navigating all the disruptions of their daily lives, more traffic around the Loop in form of heavy equipment, and upon completion, the noise of the rooftop machinery, the garage potentially causing a backup onto Main Street, several more cars utilizing the Loop. I could go on and on. But I will leave you with this. It saddens me that the people elected to serve this community don't seem to have the residence in their best interest. As stated by Mayor McCartney on the Zoom meeting in June, it is, and I quote, "A cold aesthetically unpleasing right, uh, building right on our Main Street," which she followed by, and I quote, "I just feel so disappointed in this. I couldn't agree with her more." Mrs. Mayor, this is your opportunity to say no to the variances sought here. Do the right thing by the residents in the community that you and I love so much. There's nothing beneficial to this neighborhood in terms of this new construct. Please do not grant the variants, variances that allow this cold, un-aesthetically, aesthetic, aesthetically pleasing building right on our Main Street to go forward. Keep the building within the guidelines put forth through our beautiful town. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Do any of the members of the public have comments for us? Please raise your hand and be identified. You have three minutes.
Okay. Second. We're gonna try calling, calling user one. Name and address for the record. You are muted. Okay, we have a couple others that just popped up. Grandma M. Please state your name and address for the record. You are muted. There you go.
My name is Marcia Moore. I reside at Three Park Drive South. I want to say that I agree with what my neighbors have said today and throughout the course of this project and meetings. I believe the building is not respectable of existing residents here, and I would request that you vote no variances for four-ten Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of the members of the public have public comment? Please raise your hand and be identified. You have three minutes.
We have Bob Mills. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, this is Bill Mills. I live on eleven Park Drive North. I've been a resident of the Park Drive Loop for twenty-six years. I would just like to say, I, I agree with pretty much most of the comments and testimonies of my neighbors. This building does not belong in this neighborhood. There was a lot of talk with the planner about what ifs and what should be's regarding what the, the potential of the, that location should be and, and what she felt would be, quote, "A reasonable approach." There were just too many "I thinks" and too many, it feels like, it seems like, and not enough truth. The fact is, we don't need any variances there. We don't need a building of this scale there. Something more along the line of the scale immediately to the south would make a lot more sense. I don't expect we're going to get miraculously back our beautiful farmhouse that somehow was allowed to fall into disrepair and ultimately be bulldozed. But something more in line and something safer. You know, there's a lot of talk about what, what should be, what could be, but the fact is, I've been living here for twenty-six years. Traffic ordinances are not enforced here. People routinely park in illegal zones too close to the corners where it makes it difficult for just a regular streetcar to pass. When I'm driving a van, it makes it extremely difficult. I can't imagine what would happen if an emergency services vehicle needed to get through if there was a fire or someone who needed to be taken to the hospital. Right now, it's, you go around this loop, and I could tell you at any given time, no exaggeration, and you can come through here yourself and take a look. Half a dozen vehicles, at least half a dozen vehicles illegally parked, not counting commercial vehicles that don't belong on the block, not counting people parked on the sidewalks, blocking the sidewalks, or parking in handicap areas that are not handicapped or blocking crosswalks that are the closest zone to the handicap parking spot. Overall, this is just unreasonable. There's talk about the use of mass transit. Everyone I know in this neighborhood, quite a lot of us use mass transit and have used mass transit in the past. And the fact of the matter is, we drive to the mass transit. I drive to take a train into the city every day. And that's just the way it is. People don't take the bus that runs on Main Street, even though it is right here in front of them. It's just not appropriate, and there's been three different groups of people who've been on this call. There are the residents who care about their neighborhood, their families and the safety of the people around them. There are the board members, and there's the developers' team. The residents overwhelmingly do not welcome this. And as the board members representing the residents of your town, I feel it's your duty to vote no to these variances. Thank you. I also have my wife, who's also a twenty-six-year resident of Park Drive Loop, and she would like to comment as well.
Thank you. To our representative.
Introduce yourself.
Rochelle Mills, eleven Park Drive North. To our representative, just the obvious, the need for so many variances tells you the obvious that this building does not belong to this neighborhood, nor to this part of town, affecting negatively the quality of our life, of which we pay very high taxes for. As you representing us know that very well, your consideration will be appreciated. This proposed building, the traffic congestion will be epic when you can think of UPS, Amazon, post office, all kinds of other deliveries, FedEx, school buses, and the functionality of your garage that is proposed simply blows a child's mind to try to understand how that will look for the future. We will be very thankful in the future to see how you're, you are representing us. And we thank you very much. We just vote no for this monstrosity of a building. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Do any other members of the public have any public comment? Please raise your hand and be identified. You have three minutes.
Yes, I think we're back to, I'm not sure, did Stephen L. speak this time around? We have two, two residents left to speak. Do, do you want me to let them go?
I'm going to ask Mr. Wine, would you, would you take ten minutes of questions, and we're going to have to call it? If you, if you, if you feel you can answer them, fine. If you can't answer them, fine.
I mean, I think I, the truth is, I think I heard the questions throughout, and I will, I will certainly include my responses as part of my summation.
Okay, that's fine. Then we'll continue public comment. Do any other members of the public have comments? Mr. Wine said that he's heard your questions, and in the summation, he'll, he'll answer them. So it's up to the public how they want to proceed.
May I ask a procedural question, just so I can try to time how, how I'm getting out of town hall? The board still has to ask a bunch of questions tonight, right?
The board? No.
The board is just gonna, they're not deliberating at all.
After Mr., we're going to have to have another meeting, so we have five more minutes. And we're gonna, then the board will deliberate, but we're not asking questions. We'll ask questions of each other.
Okay. All right, that's what I was trying to figure out. Thank you very much. We have Sue Lesnick. State your name and address for the record. Susan?
No, I did not raise my hand. I lowered it. I don't know how it got raised again.
That's okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Do any of the members of the public have any new comments they'd like to share, or we can call the public portion of the meeting?
Yes, we have Stephen L.
Okay, go right ahead, sir.
Hi, Stephen L., thirty Curtis Avenue. So I don't, I don't live, I mean, I live in West Orange. I don't live near this property. But I guess something just everyone should be aware of is that, you know, this property has a lot of variance, like people have talked about. But at least based on testimony of the planner and the, and the traffic engineer, I think just what, what people should just be aware of is that this needs to be approved because of variances, but based on my understanding of the zoning, this is known for commercial use. So that means someone can then build a store, and as long as they're within, with no variances, they can build a Dunkin', they can build a Seven-Eleven without needing any of the zoning board's approval, assuming they're keeping to all the offsets and necessary variances. So I think there's one risk in kind of pushing away this project, is that if another project comes up, has no variances, and is a lot worse for the community, that can be built without anyone, without the ability of anyone to counter it, assuming there's no variance necessary. So just in, in big picture, I think everyone needs to think about, you know, what the alternative is, and is there an alternative that's actually much worse in this scenario that wouldn't require board approval and could actually make the block more trafficy? So I just wanted to share that, my thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Do any other members of the public have any public comment?
Not seeing any more hands.
Being done, we're going to close this portion of the meeting. Okay, Mr. Wine, I think we should find another date for you to make your summation, so, and then we'll deliberate.
Chairman, if I can ask, just as a, as a, as a courtesy, and of course, I leave it in your hands. I would love the opportunity, while the testimony is somewhat fresh, to conclude, to sum up. I, I'll be honest with you. It's not going to be a thirty-second summation. I have probably five minutes, but I-
Five minutes, go for it.
I would like to do that and have the-
Go right ahead. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So I, I want to take the opportunity by starting, and again, thanking the board for all their time over the course of these last five meetings. As you know, we're proposing to construct a new three-story mixed-use building on a challenging site at the corner of Main Street and Park Drive North that consists of twelve one- and two-bedroom units, neighborhood commercial space, and fourteen dedicated parking spaces on the site. This board and the governing body have determined that this use is permitted for the site, subject to meeting certain conditions, all of which have been met. Ultimately, while we are seeking bulk variances- Ultimately, while we are seeking bulk variances as detailed throughout the past five hearings, despite the site challenges, the building is both in line with that imagined by the township for a mixed-use building as well as perfectly tailored to this site in terms of size, scale, and perhaps most discussed throughout these proceedings, the minimal nature of the traffic generation as compared with literally every other permitted use in the B two zone. This includes ensuring that the commercial space, as indicated, will likely be a small office or small walkable commercial space that would generate little to no vehicular traffic, recognizing that, say, a more traditional business development might trigger hundreds of cars circling the Park Drive Loop at peak business time. Traffic has been at the forefront of the public's concern and I want to stress, this is exactly why this use is preferred. Quite literally, any other permitted use will only be a much worse result. As you heard from this last resident, just look at the Dunkin' one block away. That would be permitted without variances. Yes, we have variances, but we also have justifications for those variances. To be able to split the difference and guarantee at least one parking space per unit on the property and have designated off-site parking with a way to get there is exactly the type of development that represents good planning, forward thinking and aligning with your master plan for years to come. Needing variances does not mean a project does not meet the test for granting those variances. Moreover, and this might have gotten lost along the way, and I apologize if that's the case, this adds affordable housing to the town through a combination of onsite affordable units and/or a payment to the trust fund. There is an ordinance in, in the township of West Orange and we fully intend to honor that ordinance and I'm happy to speak more to that if there are any questions. I want to just highlight a couple of the revisions that we've made along the way since we began this, this project before the board in July. We've created ground level lobby on Main Street with a storefront door to create a pedestrian connection along Main Street. We've removed mulch beds and replaced them with concrete to widen the sidewalk along Main Street. We've addressed drainage concerns. We've added stone veneer from, as an aesthetic at the base along Main Street, which is, which is such a nice feature to your, to your downtown core. We've enhanced the facade along Main Street and Park Drive North to achieve a more traditional look. We have more brick, more trim on the windows, the style, the cast stone banding. We've added awnings to the storefront glazing. We've added green roof plan trays on the roof without adding a bulkhead, I might add. We've reconsidered, I'm sorry, we've reconfigured the trash termination room in the lobby along Main Street. We've added another parking space somehow during the penancy of this application to get to fourteen. We've added a handicap bathroom to the commercial space. We've added exterior light fixtures along the rear walkway. We've accommodated requests for multiple light and audio devices providing warning for vehicles entering and exiting the building. We've also provided parking at the church, which while initially seemed to be a great idea, irrespective of any crossing of Main Street, we've now engaged the county to ensure that we'll actually have appropriate and pedestrian safe crosswalk to that parking. We've also engaged with the county regarding the general project as a whole and while we have to submit the application, it's something that I think is, is usually not done before a municipal board takes an action. Yeah, we've done that. We have challenges with this site, as you know, we have the topography, but we've used this to our advantage to create what is a two-story building in the rear while exposing a walkability at Main Street consistent with the goals of the master plan. We've ultimately created a final product that best represents and respects vehicular traffic concerns along the Park Drive Loop, Loop, given the county's prevention of a curb cut on Main Street. Recall that literally any other permitted use would generate more traffic. You've heard testimony from our engineer about the improved stormwater management on the site from what exists today, the enhanced buffering throughout proper curated landscaping on the property. And you've heard that we're bringing the site into ADA compliance. You've also heard from our architect that we're proposing a building consistent with aesthetic materials and colors of the street, which I give the board a tremendous amount of credit for making us come back with revised designs to accommodate and address that. We have a building that will be up to code for twenty twenty-four and beyond and we have a green roof component to further ensure sustainability features and stormwater management. Finally, you heard from our planner about how the general welfare is being promoted through the addition of safe passage across Main Street, utility of a vacant lot and livening up the Main Street business corridor. You heard about stormwater management to actually improve the existing conditions. You heard how the topography to come up with a unique and appropriate final product has been used to everybody's advantage. Ultimately, we're adding one and two bedroom units on a main thoroughfare, thoroughfare with access to mass transportation throughout Essex County and beyond, while still ensuring any resident with a vehicle is taken care of onsite and potentially offsite if needed, despite the testimony that it's unlikely residents of a one and two bedroom apartment would have a second car. We're replacing a dilapidated and vacant lot with a new building and landscaping to maintain, to be maintained as a condition of approval. You heard the negative criteria that there's no substantial detriment to the public good. Again, the burden is substantial. There's no market increase in traffic. We're talking about one car every twelve minutes in the peak hour. You heard that the height complies with the requirements and is actually shorter in the, in the residential area behind us. And finally, you've heard that we're preventing flooding through the stormwater management, as I mentioned. You heard that there's no impairment of the zone plan, as this is what the zone wanted when it added this as a conditional use in twenty twenty. This is precisely the type of project that will provide benefits instead of any of the other permitted uses on the property. Finally, and I'll close very briefly, but I'm gonna talk about the legal standard. As we've established, the proposed use is permitted and actually more desirable on this property. We've worked so diligently with you and your professionals, making revisions, obtaining offsite if necessary parking arrangements, establishing a crosswalk within the county, changing architecture and green elements at your direction, and even managing to add more parking to the site. The fact of the matter remains that barring pursuing this use, the only other permitted uses are standalone commercial ventures, which while they may be constructed in smaller bulk, will add a tremendous amount of traffic and be designed in a way that is parking forward and an eyesore to the residential neighborhood rather than what we've proposed. It's our job to prove the positive and negative criteria related to the variance relief and I believe we've done so. It took multiple changes, good changes, honestly, that were thoughtfully requested by you and your professionals. But as it stands, there's no expert testimony on the record to rebut our expert testimony in favor of the project as it now stands. Although a board may reject an applicant's expert testimony, it must do so in reliance on contrary expert testimony rather than bear allegations or unsubstantiated beliefs, and that comes from the NYSS MSA case against the, the Board of Adjustment in Midland Park. A resolution relying on comments and concerns from board members or local residents will not satisfy the.
I'm, I'm getting it.
Okay, will not satisfy the board's obligation to ground its decision on evidence presented during a hearing. Finally, we have agreed to the following conditions to be read into the resolution if so approved at the request of the board and the public. We would impose a lease restriction against parking tenant vehicles on the street. We would impose a lease restriction allowing for one vehicle on our site and that management has to provide the additional parking at either the church or the municipal lot as, as a condition of approval. We also have a green roof deed restriction, which we would be imposing to be maintained for the life of the building. We're also providing affordable housing compliance, as I indicated before. That would mean at twenty percent, which I believe is your ordinance's requirement, the equivalent of two point four affordable units to be in a combination of either onsite or a payment to the trust fund to be determined with your professionals and with, and, and with the governing body. We would work with the county to provide a lighted crosswalk and add a vehicular safety measure to the garage, as we've discussed. And we would of course comply with the board professionals' letters. Thank you to the board. Thank you to the board's professionals and to the public for working closely with us to take our project through the weaves and turns and nips and tucks that got us to tonight. I'm proud of the genesis of this project and I believe it's a prime example of how parties working together can take challenges and create what will ultimately be a good result and a good planning result for the community. With that, I'll close and I respectfully request that you approve our application with all of its revisions, stipulations and conditions of approval on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. At this time, we're gonna have to find a, a meeting to carry this. Ms. McGovern? She's working on it.
Okay, so.
Just to be clear, you, you, you would not entertain the idea of deliberating and.
Not now. Nope, it's, uh, we're at the end, we're at the end of useful time and it's gonna take some time to deliberate.
So, uh, uh, there's two ways you could look at it. We bumped the Essex County Country Club over to next week because we know that Essex Highland, West Essex Highlands, um, we have just one witness. They're, it kind of, it's the, both the opposition attorney as well as the applicant's attorney on that one had advised that there was only gonna be a continuation of the witness that had been testifying and that neither one of them had somebody to line up for that night. So I don't know whether if the board has closed the testimony and closed public, public comment and it's just a matter of deliberation. If you want to put this after, because we, they're paying for that meeting, so they, West Essex Highlands gets to use that meeting till they're finished. And we have then a potential time available at the end of that. And then if we get to Essex County Country Club, they'd be backed up to this one or move it over to January eighth. It's, uh.
I, I would do this one next week and that, Mr. Wine, I think that would be your preference. Is that correct?
Definitely. I also know there's some changeover of board members in January and, and I would want to make sure that everyone's had an opportunity to hear the.
Okay, so I think next week for this, this application and we can, uh.
Alright, so, so we have to be careful that the public understands that if we're carrying this, that it'll be carried until an in-person at town hall meeting at, that begins at six thirty with another application. And that this matter, assuming that it gets reached, because we know with that other application, some, times they go very long when we don't expect it to be, that if it happens that we can't get to this, we will carry it again. But for now, the public should be aware that this will be carried to six thirty PM Wednesday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-four at the town hall in an in-person meeting.
Sixty-six Main Street.
At, at the town hall, sixty-six Main Street in the Township Council chambers.
And no additional notice will be required.
Correct.
So just, I'm sorry, I see Mr. Klein has his hand up, I'm sorry.
Mr. Klein.
Probably gonna ask the same question. So just Mr. Wine is gonna be there? None of his experts are gonna be there?
I think that if the chairman, if you're saying that we're closing testimony, then we're closing testimony that you've heard enough, but I will point out, we did not hear from our planner or our engineer.
We can hear from our planner and engineer.
Alright.
Okay, so chairman, just so I understand, we said it and I have it down right, it's six thirty next Wednesday night, December eleventh, in person at, at town hall. Is that correct?
But there's an, there's an application before you.
Okay, um, okay, again, I, I'm just putting on the record that, that I, I, what I would hate to do is run into a situation where we have a change in board members and.
I'm arguing with you. We're trying as hard as we can.
I, I get it. No, and you've been nothing but, but amazing this whole process. I, I want to put that out there.
Thank you.
Okay, so to confirm, there's no further, obviously I can't make notice anyways, so.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, thank you for your time.
Thank you, okay. So now. The next special planning board meeting will be held December eleventh, twenty twenty-four, sixty-six Main Street, Council Chambers at six thirty PM in person. The next regular planning board meeting will be held Wednesday, January eighth, twenty twenty-five at seven thirty PM via Zoom. Motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman, I second all in favor. Opposed. The eyes have it. The eyes are above the nose. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you all.
Night, everybody.
Happy holiday.
Happy holidays.
And next week.